Right, we are ready to begin. I think we are now in order. So why don't we begin with virtual report outs from the virtual diocese? Let's begin with the university. Anything from you, Bill? Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, sure. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. Yeah, I just wanted to mention there's a board visitors meeting on Friday this week. And two items of, well, there's a few items, but two for approval and review. One is the School of Data Science at the Ivy Corridor. It's going to be considered for design approval. So that's, that's pretty exciting. That'll be the first big building on that site. The other is just a review of some athletics complex buildings, one for football building, Olympic sports and McHugh Center renovation. So that's something that they've been working on over in the athletics department. One other thing that's on there is more related to the community. It's the water treatment plant that sits up on O'Hill. Also, it's more procedural because that's, you know, land that we lease to the Rivanna Water and Sewer Authority through a long-term lease, but their upgrades to some of their facilities are also being considered. So those three things, and if you're interested in following the meeting, there's a live stream available. Just go to the B O V website. Thanks.
Ms. Russell.
No committee reports.
Mr. Stolzenkirk.
All right. So I think we just had a TJ PDC meeting. The big update there is with the rent and mortgage release program. So overall, we had, I think, 1.46 million in all of TJ PDC dispersed as part of that program for rent and mortgage relief. So that's good. So that in the coming months is going to be transitioned into what they're calling Rent Mortgage Relief Program 2.0, where instead of going through the TJ or through the PDCs that then like find sub-grantees like nonprofits, that's actually disperse the funds, there's going to be two single points of intake statewide. So one for tenants and one for landlords, provided by a contractor called DeVal Company, D E V A L. So I think there will be one more round of local dispersments. And then it's all going to be running through that centralized platform. So the good news is there's more funding coming. The bad news is, yeah, we'll see how that goes. So also some pretty cool work being done by TJ PDC. Sarah Pennington, one of their staffers, won an award for it. And a program called Telework VA. So her focus before was in transportation demand management and trying to get people out of their cars. Obviously, a lot more people not going to the office at all now, and she's helping companies kind of transition to that with the goal of hopefully, you know, making work more flexible and less reliant on commutes in the future, even after COVID ends. So those are the big two updates I've got. We missed our place meeting last month because it wasn't noticed, but this Thursday in two days, we will have another place meeting once again to discuss the future of the committee and if, or what its task is if it has one. Thanks.
Reverend Eaton.
I don't have any council or commission reports. I did get involved a little bit with the Rivanna River Advisory Committee. They are having a meeting tomorrow night of the South Fork Advisory Committee, where they're going to be looking at setting up some waters, some stream monitoring, as well as monitoring of pollutants. So I thought that was a worthwhile group that they're under some new leadership and they're doing some good work out there.
Good. Thanks, Ms. Dowell.
Good afternoon or evening, everyone, and Merry Christmas. So on Friday, November 13th, as part of the Ridge Street Task Force, we walked the neighborhood. And as we were walking the neighborhood, looking at some points or areas of concern that the task force had raised, we also spoke with different neighbors that we saw in the neighborhood to get their input on what they felt the concerns and needs were. The next meeting where the task force members had to do a little bit of homework and we will be prioritizing what the priorities are for the task force is December 16th at 4:00 PM. Also, on November 12th, we had our CDBG Task Force meeting. It was, we had several applicants and FAR and LVCA were in our public service sector. We also had LEAK and Habitat Day get awarded funds, and I'm not going to go into too many details because we do have Erin on the line and she's going to be going over that shortly. And also just for full transparency, at 6:30, I will be excusing myself just for roughly about an hour. Rising fifth graders at Walker Upper Elementary School have orientation tonight. I can't believe I'm attending Rising Fifth Grader Orientation, but here we are.
Really? Wow, that's crazy.
I know.
Mr. Soliates.
The Seaville Plans Together Steering Committee met on November 23rd and reviewed a presentation that may seem very familiar to you about the draft affordable housing plan. I posted that into the chat. It was the same material, but it was better the second time. Worth reviewing.
And Ms. Delitra. And you may need to unmute.
I know, I know. I eventually get to it. Thank you, Chair Mitchell. Since the last time planning commission has met, I met with the Board of Architectural Review on November 17th. We had five certificate of appropriateness applications that were approved. We deferred one of the application for 612 West Main Street, the new apartment building on West Main. We had two pre-application discussions. And then just a sort of an enticement to pay attention next month to our BAR. We're going to have for the first time awards given out to projects since 2017. I don't think it's taken that long to find projects that are deserving of awards, but we just got out of the habit of doing it. So that'll come out next month. On December 1st, the Tree Commission met. We spent a great deal of time going over our month-to-month annual calendar, making adjustments for the world of COVID and shuffling our objectives and then putting new emphasis on certain things. We had a wonderful report from the Charlottesville area Tree Stewards, Mark Zohn-Hofford, with the Tree Stewards. He's the representative on the Tree Commission, went over many of the things that they've done over the last year. And then third, we had a report on the CIP operating budgets and then the annual report to city council. It came up during that as we were thinking about the 490-some acres of trees that the city has lost between 2004 and 2014. That equates to about point three-quarters of a square mile. And when you have 10.4 square miles in the city of Charlottesville, that's an awful lot of trees to lose. And we're going the wrong direction for quote-unquote "the tree city." So just something to consider. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, what do I got? LUPAC. So on 11/20, went to the LUPAC meeting, the LUPAC media, the LUPAC group is the city, the county UVA and the Water and Sewers, which authority. And the focus of the LUPAC group is to focus on environmental and land use issues that all three of us, plus the Water and Sewer folks, need to be worried about. And we at that meeting were represented by Alex and a couple of other city officials and me. There were a couple of reports regarding landfill diversion. A report regarding the water and sewage safety yield study. But the thing that I think is most pertinent to the work that we do was a report out, or the discussion was actually back and forth discussion on smart scale. Smart scale is what we call streetscapes. Think Fontaine, think Emmett's streetscape. And Ms. Russell, they pretty much echoed the issue that you talked about last month. You mentioned that we've done a lot of work on Fontaine, getting ready to implement that. But we got that all the work up to the county line. For example, there's a sidewalk that'll go all the way up to the county line, but nothing after that. So we spent the bulk of our meeting talking about what we can do better when it comes to these smart scale projects. What we can do better is let's do these streetscape projects that we work on. And at the end of the day, we agreed that going forward, we would engage all three entities where appropriate, UVA, Alamo County and the city, on all these smart scale slash streetscape projects. So that we don't have another Fontaine issue happening where again, we, the city does all the planning it needs to do up until the county line and we've not engaged the county. So a commitment was made to begin engaging all three important entities in the process at the conceptual level. So Ms. Chrissy, what do we have from NDS?
All right. Well, we are, we are still continuing forward in our current state. We have number of individuals continue to work from home and then we have folks pop in and pop out to, to make sure that all of our items are addressed. So as I have been able to say in our last couple of meetings is that we have a path for each application to continue to move through a process. And that is something that we're definitely grateful for. We have, we're prepping for the meeting with the County Planet Commission in January. Again, a reminder that is January 26th, which is Tuesday, Fourth Tuesday at 5:30. And this Thursday, myself, Alex and Hosea will be meeting with folks on the county end so we can refine the agenda for that. But we're excited to have that opportunity and we'll look forward to talking more about housing with our regional partners there. So definitely a plus there. I think that is it.
Hey then, Mr. Rice. We are ready to go with matters to be presented by the public that are not only formally legitimate, so public. This is your opportunity to talk to us about the work that we do, but talk to us about things that we're not going to be talking about later on in the evening. If it's something you want to talk about relating to the bug grant or the old Fontaine or the SUP, please wait until we get to those agenda items. So, Mr. Rice, is there anyone in the lobby that would like to speak?
Thank you, Chair Mitchell. If anyone would like to address the commission during this public comment opportunity, please click the raise hand icon, or if you're joining us by phone, press star nine. Once we enable your audio, please unmute your mic or star six by phone, and you will have three minutes for comment. We currently have one hand raised and Mr. Mark Cavett. Mr. Cavett, I will enable your audio. Please unmute your mic. You have three minutes.
Welcome, Hart. Mark, you're here. Mark, you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Now, Mark, now you're muted. You may want to unmute again. Right, you are now unmuted, but we're not, we're not hearing anything. All right, Mark, why don't we come back to you a little later on, maybe when we're having the other things. In the meantime, while we try to work through Mark, Mr. Rice, is there anyone else?
Sorry about that, Chair Mitchell. Yeah, Mr. Cavett, if you could hear us, perhaps phoning in as well might help. We do have one other person with their hand up, and that is Mr. James Rucker. Mr. Rucker, you're on with commission. You have three minutes.
Welcome. And Ms. Rice, I'm beginning to worry the problem may be on our end since we can't hear Mr. Rucker either.
Very odd indeed. Mr. Rucker, can you hear us? Please put your hand down if you can hear us. So I'm not even sure if they can hear us, Chair Mitchell. Why don't we pause public comment for this moment and I'll see if I can find out what's going on behind this.
We'll, we'll work on the consent agenda and then we'll rotate back.
And one thing I maybe mentioned is that from Mr. Cavett's email and Mr. Rucker's chat message, it seems likely that their comments are pertaining to the hearing later, and there will be a chance to speak then.
Thanks. Thank you. Well, since you've got the floor, Ms. Fures Stolzenberg, you had some comments about the minutes. I think you had an amendment you'd like to make.
Yep, I've got one small amendment, which is just substituting CSR P on page 23 of the minutes to CISRAP or CSR AP, the whatever that stands for, Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program. And that's the only change I got. So unless anyone else has any others, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
I can second that.
All right, all in favor, Reg? Any objections? Any objections? All right, the minutes are approved. So I work to Mr. Rice and Mr. Cavett. Reminder, I did see something pop up in chat. We will be talking about the SUP a little later on in the meeting, and that would be when we would want you guys to speak to the SUP. So if that's what you're attempting to talk about, let's wait until we get to the SUP. That's going to be one public hearing later in the meeting. In the meantime, Mr. Rice, where are we?
Well, we can certainly try this one more time. If anyone else would like the opportunity to speak during this public comment opportunity, please click the raise hand icon or star nine on your phone. Currently, there are no hands raised, Mr. Chair Mitchell.
Ms. Chrissy, do we have a council?
We do. We are going to have a council quorum at 6 o'clock.
Is there anything else that we can chat about between now and then?
Um, hmm. I don't know that we're going to have ample time, so.
Right, so why don't we go into recess for 13 minutes back at 6:00? Cool. Thanks.
I like that shirt, Jody. Can't hear you, but I'm sure you're saying something good.
He went off again. I was giving tours at seven thirty this morning and it was cold outside, so I wanted to be comfortable.
I like it.
And yours as well.
Thank you very much.
Chair Mitchell, I just sent a chat message to the panelists and attendees, sending out a phone number in case we're still having audio issues. Still think it might be an extraordinary coincidence, but hopefully whatever it is, it's temporary. But there is a phone number there that the public can call in, hoping that would, that would work if we continue.
Good. And I think we are ready to begin again. Counselor Hill, is counsel in order? Is counsel in order? And may we begin the joint meeting?
Yes, I'm so sorry. I'm just switching over to my other device, but yes, we are here in order. Thank you.
Right, very good. The first item that we're going to review, and we will have public comment on this item, relates to the recommendations made by the block grant task force. The first item is the community development block grant coronavirus recommendations, allocations of the funds related to that. The money is associated with this grant will be used to facilitate projects that prepare for and or mitigate the impact of the virus. We're expecting about three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in grants from H G D for that. We will also review the task forces recommended allocation for the traditional block grants. We are expecting an allocation of around four hundred and nineteen thousand bucks for that. We anticipate that we'll be using these monies, this money to do improvements on Ridge Street for economic development, for housing activities, and for public service projects that benefit moderate to low income citizens. In the last piece, the last recommended allocations that we'll review will be for the home funds. The home funds will be used to facilitate homeownership rehabilitation. And will be used for down payment assistance for moderate and low income citizens, moderate to low income citizens. And we're expecting around eighty thousand dollars to be allocated for that. So, three things about the way we're going to manage our conversation. We will have one combined staff report for all three items. We'll have one combined public hearing for all three items, but we need to have two votes. The first vote will be related to the, the block grant related to the virus. The second vote will be related to the, the traditional block grant and the own funds as well. So we'll vote on the home funds and the traditional block grant together. And we will vote on the block grant related to the virus separately. Everybody got that? See nods? Okay, great. So I think we've got a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. You did a good job explaining that. So I want to briefly give a background. So as an entitlement community, each year the city of Charlottesville is awarded the C D B G and home grants through HUD. All localities are required to complete an action plan for the grants that detail the goals and objectives to be carried out on for the upcoming fiscal year. This year, due to the global health pandemic, the city was issued a special allocation of C D B G, known as the C D B G C V three. And moving forward, I'm just going to call that C V three so that there's less confusion. This was made available through the CARES Act and according to HUD priorities, C V three dollars are meant to fund activities that will prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. So again, tonight we'll be talking about three separate grants. First is the C V three totaling three hundred and thirty-five thousand and twenty-four dollars. Second is the C D B G totaling approximately four hundred and nineteen thousand and three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And the third is the home fund totaling eighty thousand and five hundred and ninety-four dollars approximately. So the city placed a request for proposals on September thirtieth and began accepting applications between October first and October sixteenth, twenty twenty. All project proposals were told to support a viable urban community through the provision of decent housing, provide suitable living environments, and provide an economic opportunity for low and moderate income citizens, and also prevents, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. So we got that C V three aspect in there. Applicants also had to undergo a thirty to forty-five minute mandatory technical assistance meeting with me prior to submitting an application. So during that session, we went over the grant requirements that were expected and mandatory for all sub recipients that, you know, if they undertook the grant, this is what was expected of them. So during that, during that session, we covered what could be bought with federal dollars, federal paperwork requirements, filing requirements. So how long do you have to keep paperwork stored onsite? Contract requirements, so submitting an audit, scope of work budget requirements. We went over an application workshop. So how do you fill out an application for the C D B G and home grant? Environments or review requirements, scoring rubrics, and the grant guidelines. I met with a total of twelve applicants and we received a total of eight applications. During this process, some applicants, as I was meeting with them, decided that they wanted to use this time to learn more about the grant process and revisit applying next year in a different grant cycle. And others learned that, oh, maybe this activity doesn't actually, you know, fit the criteria and they're going to revisit and apply in a different fiscal year. The C D B G task force was provided with an evaluation criteria, so a rubric, grant guidelines, and application and staff notes from myself, and they made the review and gave me their scores on each application. The rubric was used and created several years ago with input from a previous task force from a previous C D B G and home task force. And it was also created by with help from the HUD sub recipient training manual. So both input created the C D B G rubric. One change that was made to the scoring manual this year to address HUD's twenty-four CFR five seventy-nine oh two A, which is a HUD timeliness entitlement regulation, all entitlement localities must follow when undertaking a C D B G and home grants. Essentially, a certain dollar amount must be spent by the end of the program year. As a compliance change to the rubric, any applicant with outstanding funds from a prior fiscal year would not be receiving as strong of a consideration during the review process. That didn't mean that they couldn't apply. They could still apply. They just wouldn't be receiving the full score. The main purpose again was to encourage applicants to increase their spending rate during the grant program year to help the city stay in compliance with the HUD spending timeliness and recruit new applicants into the C D B G and home program. So today, following the public hearing, staff is going to be asking planning commissioners to make a funding recommendation to take forward a city council concerning the following two budgets. The C V three budget allocation for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and then the C D B G and home budget allocation for twenty-one, twenty-two. Under C V three project recommendations, the task force made the following recommendations for economic development and public service activities. Under economic development, the task force made the funding recommendation for community investment collaborative for one hundred and thirty thousand and nine hundred and seventy dollars for the micro enterprise COVID response program. This is aimed to help support twenty-four micro enterprises with grants of up to four thousand dollars. Under public services, the task force recommended to fund Charlottesville redevelopment housing authority, also known as CRHA, up to ninety-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-four cents for the eviction diversion program. This program is twofold. So the first is to hire a housing stabilization coordinator. And the second portion of the activity is to fund one hundred COVID-related emergency rents for CRH residents. The second C V three public service activity that was put forth as a funding recommendation is the Habitat for Humanity COVID-nineteen Response Program. So this is a mortgage rental relief program for seventy-five to one hundred city residents. And then the fourth item budgeted for the C V three program is the administrative and planning portion of the grant set at sixty-seven thousand and four dollars and eighty cents. This is used to pay staffing, citizen participation, Davis Bacon Environmental Reviews, Section Three, for the next six years of the C V three grant. I did say six years. It's a six-year grant for C V three. For the regular C D B G, so different grants, no more C V three. The task force made the following recommendations for economic development. So we have two applicants for economic development. The first is Community Investment Collaborative for the Financial Management Program. This application will be assisting fifteen to twenty entrepreneurs. And the funding proposal or funding recommendation was set at thirty-two thousand and fifty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. The second economic development application for C D B G is set at twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the Local Energy Alliance Program for the Assisted Home Performance Workforce Development Program. This activity will be hiring two staff members for the Assisted Home Performance Program. The two staff members will be paid at initially fifteen dollars an hour minimum and will be taking weatherization training courses to receive a class certificate. Who will then, so the two staff members will later be receiving a pay increase later on at the end of the receipt of their certificate. Under C D B G Public Services, the task force recommended Public Housing Association of Residents to receive thirty-four thousand dollars for the resident involved redevelopment to help prevent homelessness among residents of public housing. And the task force also recommended the literacy volunteers of Charlottesville and Admiral for a funding proposal of twenty-five thousand dollars, a funding recommendation of twenty-five thousand dollars. The literacy volunteers of Charlottesville and Admiral is proposing to help develop or provide beginner level workforce development tutoring program for thirty illiterate city residents, sorry. Under the C D B G Housing section of the grant, the task force made a funding recommendation to fund the LEAP program again for the Assisted Home Performance Program at sixty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. So this portion, LEAP, will be providing twenty low-income households with energy-efficient upgrades for the Assisted Home Performance Program. The C D B G dollars will be used in tandem with the home dollars, and I'll get to that in a second. Once again, the task or the C D B G admin and planning portion of the grant is budgeted at eighty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty cents. This is twenty percent of the entitlement, which is a HUD standard. This is used to pay for staffing costs, citizen participation, equipment costs, Davis Bacon, Section Three, and all the citizen participation requirements for all the activities as well. For the Ridge Street Priority Neighborhood, as Ms. Dowell mentioned, the Ridge Street Task Force has been holding monthly meetings since, starting back in December. Once the task force comes up with an activity, we will come back to the planning commission for public feedback and input, which will then be later presented to city council and adopted as part of the larger budget. For home, so we have three activities that were put forth for recommendation. The first is the Admiral Housing Improvement Program, AIP. The task force recommended a funding. The task force recommended funding AIP at thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. They will be, this is a activity that will be funding one homeowner rehab within the Ridge Street Priority Neighborhood. This is for one of the historic tonsler homes. The second activity will be, is set to fund Habitat for Humanity at twenty-four thousand dollars. This is to provide for down payment assistance activities at six thousand dollars each. And then the third activity again is the Assisted Home Performance Program with LEAP. This is to be paired with the C D B G dollars to provide twenty energy-efficient upgrades for the Assisted Home Performance Program. Yep. So again, there are two motions today. The urgent one is the C V three because of the coronavirus. And then the second one is the C D B G and home for fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two. I am available for any questions you may have. I can go into some of the programs a little bit more in depth. I did want to let Ms. Dowell talk and give some input on the task force discussions as well, but I am here for any questions you may have.
Ms. Dowell?
Any questions?
When we go from left to right, UVA, Mr. Paul, are any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Ms. Russell?
I don't have any questions. Is now a good time for me to make a statement?
Yes, yes, that would be good. Now would be good.
So I, I am able to participate in the discussion around the C D B G C V three funding. However, regarding the C D B G and home funding, I have a statement that I would like to ask Ms. Creasy, reflect in the meetings of tonight's, in the minutes of tonight's meeting. I am a member of the Governing Board of AIP, which will stand to receive funding under these budget allocations. Because of this, I may have a personal interest in the transaction. That is before the Commission tonight for Action, and I'm disqualifying myself from participating in that transaction. The business address of AIP is twenty-one, twenty-seven State Route fourteen oh three, Charlottesville, Virginia two-two nine oh one.
And thank you, Mr. Stolzenberg.
Yeah, I think Erin did a great job of answering the questions that I did have, but then raised another one at the end. So you said the, the AIP funding is for the tonsler home? Is that the same tonsler home that's like owned by the guy who owns Trinity? Or is this a different one?
So I don't have the exact address on hand. Just for privacy reasons, we weren't given the address upfronts during the task force discussion. I can, if the task force does move forward with the funding and is approved later on, I could send you that address as we're coming, working through the environmental review. It is, as like in the application itself, it does note that it's one of the historic tonsler homes.
Okay. Yeah, I think I had seen somewhere in the minutes that someone asked if it was, you know, going to be a rental home with a wealthy landlord versus a low-income homeowner? And someone did say it was going to be a homeowner. So is that right?
Correct.
It's probably not the one I'm thinking of then. I sent that one to the chat just now, but that's all good then. I think that makes sense.
Reverend Eaton?
No, I don't have any questions.
Aaron and Roy, I do, sorry to interrupt. I do believe that the tonsler home, if I can recall correctly, in the application, it's a family that's currently living in the home, and the house needs major rehabilitation.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay. Yeah, the one I was thinking of, I want to say it's still vacant and was like getting run down. There was a story about it a couple of years ago, but it sounds like it's not that one. So we're all good.
Hey, Ms. Dowell, you've got the floor. Do you have anything else? Anything else to add?
I would like to add that I do, we did, I think Erin admitted one small big portion of our application process this year is that we did update the scoring rubric a little bit. And it also made it much more easier as someone on the task force to be able to flow through the, the application and the scoring rubric actually matched up this time. And not saying that before it wasn't perfect, but it was very easy to be able to Um, and not saying that before it wasn't perfect, but it was very easy to be able to have all of the information for that particular portion of the score and rubric in order. Um, so I would like to give her those kudos that she forgot to give to herself. Um, I do think we had good discussion. It is always hard when it comes to allocating funds when, um, people, every project is good for the most part, and it's just about how great you can make it look on paper. But does anyone else have any other questions?
Well, let me, uh, go to the next guy, um, Ms. Chris Soliates.
Uh, thank you for answering my many questions on this topic. Um, can you e- explain how, how, uh, federal regulations changed a little bit this year?
So they didn't actually change, they were just added into the rubric so as to stress the importance of timeliness. Um, the, let me pull up the citation here. The twenty-four five seventy-nine oh two. Um, each year when we're given a grant entitlement, we're supposed to spend down, you know, one point, a rate of one point five by the end of the year. If you don't match, or if you don't meet that rate, one consequence that the city does face is a possible decrease in next year's funds. So, um, as one change, one change that was made is the rubric this year is adding a outstanding funds portion to, like, section to the rubric. So any applicant who wanted to apply this year with any unspent CDBG and home dollars, um, they were welcome to apply, but, you know, if they had, you know, five thousand dollars left unspent from a prior year, that would negative negatively impact them. The whole point of adding that in there was to encourage applicants to close that account so that the city could maintain timeliness with HUD. And so that we could, you know, boost up our grant allocation for upcoming years. Does that make sense?
Now, also, one of the other things that, um, it's part of the application is the applicants have to submit a timeline of, um, how they plan to spend the budget. And so that is, um, something that we've been looking at closely, so we don't get deemed or get a decrease in funding.
Correct.
Anything else? Oh, loud. Anything else?
Uh, no, thank you.
Miss to the intro?
Uh, no questions, uh, just, uh, wanted to say though that I, in reading the materials for the meeting tonight, um, and listening to the presentation, I'm just very, um, satisfied and impressed with the objectivity and the thoroughness of the process of the evaluation process that the city has gone through and the program has gone through. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
I have no questions. Thank you, Chair Mitchell.
I have none either.
None for me.
Right. And Mr. Rice, I think we are now ready to open it up for a public hearing.
Thank you, Chair Mitchell.
Yes.
If anybody in attendance would like to speak to this public hearing, please raise your hand. Uh, click the raise hand icon or press star nine if you're joining us by phone. And we have one person or looks like a couple of people with their hands raised. Uh, first is Kimber and Hockey. And you are on with commission and you have three minutes. Please unmute your mic.
And welcome, Kimber and Hockey.
Hi, how are you? This is about the, uh, SUP application for Marjorie.
Actually, we're going to be talking about that next, so why don't you?
Okay, I'll wait, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. But thank you. And the good news, um, Jill, is the audio is working day. Good job.
Don't know if I did much, but, uh, thank goodness. Okay, next, uh, looks like we have local energy. Uh, you are now on with commission and you have three minutes.
Welcome, local energy.
Uh, yeah, this is Chris Meyer, sorry, uh, from the Executive Director of the Local Energy Alliance Program or LEAP. We're a applicant. Uh, and Erin, I think, did a great job of summarizing our proposals. Uh, we did, as, as I think you might have noticed, have multiple proposals to the different buckets of funding because we believe uh, that multiple activities that we deliver to low-income residents in the city, uh, again, fit the scopes of work, uh, that are funded by the different, uh, projects. I will mention, and again, we, I don't think would be a natural, uh, proposal necessarily for the economic development portion of the grant, but, uh, we do anticipate uh, growing, and this is, I think, a growth sector for the state generally, and, and wanting to hire more local uh, residents and specifically out of the Ridge Street neighborhood to then serve, uh, their neighbors in this community. So when we talk about uh, hiring those positions, those people would be the ones delivering the services that the city is, is talking about, and the services being, you know, attic installation, replacing HVACs, uh, doing analysis for, uh, reducing energy costs and, and other types of home improvements in that sense. Um, so and I'll just say, you know, we finally, we traditionally have received funding and currently receive funding from the city to do this under the capital improvement uh, budget, but that fiscal year allocation this year was not, uh, included, so we are technically running out of funds, uh, to continue to do the energy efficiency work we do, uh, from the city funding. Uh, receiving funds under the CDBG would, of course, allow us to continue to do that. Uh, and we're, we applied because we don't know what is going to happen with the capital improvement, uh, budget going forward, so being able to have security around, uh, receiving funds from these buckets, of course, will ensure, again, I don't have to worry about what's happening in the capital improvement budget. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Rice?
If anyone else would like to address the commission during this public hearing, please raise your hand or click star nine.
Right, with that, I will close the public hearing. And before we continue the discussion, I've, um, I've actually served only block grant task force before a number of times, and I've seen a lot of these. And, uh, Ms. Dow, Erin, this is an excellent verbal, very nice work. You guys did a lot of good work here. And it was easy to read, and, uh, I do like the new rubric. I remember it being a nightmare. Years gone by, just trying to track this stuff, so thank you, guys. Uh, many further discussion by the commission. Is there a motion? For the CB three, which is the virus, uh, oriented? We have a motion, is there a second?
Uh, may I make the motion?
I thought you did make a motion. I thought there was a motion.
Yes, let's say that.
So, uh, motions made by Mr. Soliates, is there a second?
I'd like to second. Uh, Lau, you want to say your motion?
I would like to say it, yes, thank you. Uh, for the, uh, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one CDBG dash CV three budget allocations as recommended by the CDBG slash home task force on eleven twelve twenty twenty, move to recommend.
I'd like to second that motion.
Any more discussion? Ms. Chrissy, would you behold the board?
Yes, uh, Mr. Lahindra.
Aye.
Mr. Soliates.
Aye.
Ms. Dow.
Aye.
Mr. Heaton.
Aye.
Mr. Stolzenberg.
Aye.
Ms. Russell.
Aye.
And Mr. Mitchell.
Aye. Right, yeah, Yanados, again, excellent piece of work, congratulations. The, um, next item is the traditional block grant in home. Is there a motion? Is there any discussion about that? Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
Mr. Soliates.
I move to recommend, uh, the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two CDBG and home budget allocations as recommended by the CDBG slash home task force on eleven twelve twenty twenty.
I'd like to second that motion.
Uh, second, any further discussion? Ms. Chrissy, would you poll the board?
Sure, Mr. Lahindra.
Aye.
Mr. Soliates.
Yes.
Ms. Dow.
Aye.
Mr. Heaton.
Aye.
Mr. Stolzenberg.
Aye.
Ms. Russell.
In this, I have to accuse myself.
That's right. Thank you. And Mr. Mitchell.
Uh, yes. So, the, we move to recommend, um, as outlined by the task force. And once again, this is great. I, this is one of the better reports and better, uh, deliverables I've seen from this group, so thank you, guys. Grateful. The, uh, next item is a special use. The application number is SP two zero dash zero 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 one. The, um, project, the subject project of this application is located one thousand Monticello Road. This is the Belmont Heights, um, uh, buildings. The, um, area is currently zone neighborhood commercial corridor, NCC. Multi-family, uh, dwelling buildings are allowed by right. The density can be up to twenty-one units per acre. And I think in, uh, Brian will correct me if I'm wrong here, um, the byright height is, uh, forty-five feet. Maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, uh, later. There are currently twenty-three, uh, units on the site. The applicant would like to build an additional eleven units. This would take the, uh, take the number of units to thirty-four units. And bring the density to forty-two units, uh, per acre. That is twenty-one more units than allowed by right. I think that the height that they're asking for is only forty-one feet, so that falls within the current byright height. The applicant has proposed, and we'll chat more about this later, as a condition of approval, that nine of the units, nine of the eleven units that they'd like to head be affordable units, uh, per guidelines. And again, we'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, later. But Mr. Hulusky, I think you are managing this one.
I am, thank you, commissioners and counselors. So as, uh, Commissioner Mitchell said, stated, this is a special use permit for property at one thousand Monticello Road. Uh, it is commonly known as the Belmont Heights Apartments. Uh, the request is for additional density. Uh, and that's, that's the extent of the request. Um, the property is currently non-conforming as to the zoning. It has, uh, above the byright density now. Um, it's been a longstanding development, so the NCC zoning in two thousand and three probably made it non-conforming. Um, so it currently has above the byright density, but they are asking for eleven additional units, uh, to the twenty-three that are already existing on site, which would take the total density to forty-two dwelling units per acre, which, uh, the NCC permits, zoning permits up to forty-three dwelling units per acre, the especially use permit. Um, the standard of review is found in section one fifty-seven of the zoning ordinance. Uh, we've gone through an analysis of that, including the comprehensive plan. Um, there's a lot of comprehensive plan goals that this, uh, project does seem to support, or seems to support the project. A couple of the concerns that have been raised, and I would just want to highlight, um, primarily what we've seen is, one, that this is a, a taller building on this corridor. Um, as I stated in the staff report, it seems to be in line with the height of the adjacent industrial building, the Virginia Industries for the Blind Building adjacent to it. But it does have a visual impact on downtown Belmont. Um, it would kind of be at the end of the Belmont, downtown Belmont corridor. Um, so it would kind of be, you know, as you're looking down Monticello Road from that commercial district, you would see this building, and it would be three stories on Monticello. Uh, that is a correction that needs to be made on page ten. I mentioned it being four stories and stepping down to three. Uh, if you can look at the elevations, I got that backwards. Um, it's three stories on Monticello Road. The site slopes away from Monticello Road, so it would pick up a fourth story as it moves into the site. Uh, adjacent property owners as well have mentioned, uh, traffic, uh, traffic concern. Uh, in, in looking at the analysis of the additional eleven units, when it comes to traffic generation or trip relocation based on adding units to the site, you can see from the traffic generation numbers, uh, it's a fairly small number of units in the peak hour, but there is some kind of growing concern along the entire, uh, the entire corridor there, particularly the adjacent Monticello. There's been, uh, the Jimmy Deder property is, is it's known, or the Belmont Apartments property and the impact of that on that corridor along with this and kind of the cumulative effect of all of these things. So we've mentioned that, you know, that's one of the things that traffic engineering will have to maintain, but the attributable increase to that traffic on the corridor from this project is fairly small. Uh, there is a change to the access of the site. Uh, currently, the site is accessed off of Monticello Road and Bainbridge. Uh, as a part of this, the building site is that access from Monticello Road, so um, right now they share access with an adjacent business, so this isn't an entire driveway cut going away in the process, but it does get narrower as a part of the construction of this building and all traffic then accesses off of Bainbridge Street. Uh, parking, the applicant does propose to show all parking spaces on site. Uh, the to- total, if they are to build thirty-four units, they would be required to do thirty-five parking spaces because one of the existing units on site is a three-bedroom unit, which requires two spaces, everything else requires one. And I think I will stop my analysis there rather than rehashing my entire staff report. Uh, just to say that, uh, staff is recommending approval of this based on the comprehensive plan goals that it satisfies as well as the ability to mitigate the impacts along that corridor. And I, I know we do want to touch a little bit on the proposal with, contained within the application regarding nine of the eleven units that are being constructed on the site proposed to meet, uh, the HUD definition of affordability initially. Uh, there's language in the proposed condition that the applicant put forward, uh, capping the maximum amount of rent increases per year that doesn't, uh, that, that is not in compliance with the city policy. So staff elected to not put that condition into the staff report, but rather use the, uh, language that was suggested by our attorneys that, uh, if, that all affordable units, both those that would comply with thirty-four twelve, but also any above that, would just comply with our policy so that we can adequately enforce that. And as a side note on that, um, this is, I, I did, and in the course of writing the staff report and looking through our comprehensive plan goals and trying to ascertain if, which goals were to be included in the staff report, there's a section about, in our comprehensive plan, about supporting existing affordable units. And, uh, so I did ask the owner if they had any supported units, and they kind of replied that they did not have a formal program, but they do have subsidized units within the development, uh, informally. And so that just kind of brought a thought that, uh, um, I'll kind of put as an aside, which is how we treat, um, private owners that are doing some sort of affordability or want to do some sort of affordability, but don't want to work within the parameters of the existing programs we have, but want to go above and beyond. Something to keep in mind, because it just kind of popped in my head, so I want to make sure that it pops in your heads as well, um, as we work on that type of stuff. Um, so I'll stop there, and if you have any questions for me, um, I'm happy to answer them, and then the applicant has a presentation as well.
All right, why don't we do what we always do, start with the left and go to the right. Um, Mr. Palmer, any questions? You can just go this way.
Yeah, I just can't find the mute button. Uh, no, I don't have any questions, thanks.
Ms. Russell?
Um, Rory clarified my question about dwelling unit density. Um, I was trying to just figure out the net change. Um, I did want to know, and, and maybe it's more appropriate to talk about this after the, um, applicant has made their presentation, if there were any changes to the application or plan, um, made as a result of the community feedback on the eighth.
I, I can go ahead and handle that. Um, there were, you know, these were the original documents that were submitted to the city. There have not been updates to that. Um, so any update you see in the presentation is something that staff has not vetted.
Okay. Okay, I, um, you know, I have some concerns about the, the, um, changes to the, you know, one's experience in, in the historic downtown Belmont, uh, because as you noted in your staff report, it will become a focal point. It will alter the skyline. I was just looking on a street view and wondering if the trees that are, um, could be buffering, you know, views right now are part of that parcel, is any, yeah, I, I can't tell just by looking if they're, um, you know, proposing to remove a lot of trees that might be. you know, proposing to remove a lot of trees that might be screening views right now, or if those trees are on the adjacent property. I think they're actually on the adjacent property.
I believe so, but let me, I'll pull the stat, the site plan up while we're talking, and I'll confirm that for you before the applicant speaks.
And I'm sure you're aware then, though, of the when this parcel was purchased in spring of two thousand and nineteen, there were ten longtime residents of the buildings, fourteen residents received notice of the end of their month-to-month lease. They had to move. The apartments were renovated by the current applicant, and, you know, we, we lost some units that were functioning as affordable housing. So, you know, in the conversation around what are we asking, you know, what provisions? What are developers doing to keep housing affordable and how should we view them? I think it's important to understand the, you know, the, the whole picture in this, in the story of this site, which was that there was affordable housing that was changed, and now, you know, a new and more density is being requested.
Mr. Stolzenberg.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is the big question about this project to me. Thirty-four dash one fifty-seven A for C pretty clearly asks us to consider displacement of existing residents. And I mean, I guess you could make an argument that, well, we kicked them all out like the week before filing the application, so it doesn't technically count. But I, I don't think it makes sense to approach this in that way. So I guess my question for you is if you could add any color to what you just said about like informally subsidized units within the existing project? Because it sounds like that, that is related to that situation.
I can pull up the, the email. Like I said, it was done in context with in terms of trying to ascertain if there was a goal in the planning commission in the, in the comprehensive plan that they met, which is, you know, the retention of and expansion of existing units. The applicant did state the four of the long-term tenants are significantly subsidized at six hundred per month rent abatement and one at three hundred and fifty. So that's, you know, in, in talking with the applicant, that they just came up in that sense. So that's, that's kind of the numbers they're talking, they're, they're doing. I've had a couple emails back and forth, and, you know, the applicant indicated that, or the owner indicated that they aren't particularly not huge fans of going through some of the public subsidy programs. But, and so they, that's kind of where my comment came up about, you know, if you had people who just want to do their own thing, but you are proposing that in a special use permit, how do we formalize that? And that's been a, a long-term issue that we've had to deal with of people who, who, you know, how do you separate the people who actually want to do it from the people who are just promising and then are going to pull it back once they get the opportunity, because they don't have anything legally binding? And that's probably a discussion for, you know, our increased authority under the state for affordable housing programs, but and not for this application, because they've got to deal with the code that they have.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I hope the applicant plans on clarifying that, because yeah, I mean, if there are, if these residents were able to come back after these renovations, that would make a pretty big difference than if they got, you know, all kicked out. And I guess the follow-up question I'd ask in relation to that, you know, question about how this will work administratively with what they offered. I guess it doesn't matter for those units, because they're not the ones being offered, but rather for the new ones. So so we've got this paragraph, this very vague paragraph that says ambiguous things. We're going to apply a condition saying that it has to abide by the adopted standard operating procedures. And when those conflict, are we saying that, like, what wins?
As, as the motion is drafted right now, or as the, the proposed is drafted, the, the language from the applicant is not carried forward. So if it's not referenced in the resolution that city council approves, it's, it's just, it's, it's, you know, it was a note in the application, but it has no kind of standing. We, we enforce what's in the resolution and what those conditions are as listed in the resolution approved by council.
But per Ms. Robertson's comment in the pre-meeting, you know, if we're, if it's going beyond our statutory authority, which is thirty-four dash twelve and the formula in it. They're voluntarily offered by the applicant, but obviously we need some way of handling it administratively. So does that mean that by adding this condition, we can enforce those rules on those units?
So what we are saying by adding this condition is that we welcome any additional affordable units above and beyond what's the minimum that's required by thirty-four twelve. But the, the developer will need to use our definition of affordability and in terms of the administrative requirements of our standard operating procedure, affordable units provided will be subject to those regulations. So that includes if a unit's provided, they may have to enter into some sort of agreement, making an enforceable commitment to a period of affordability that's allowed by the regulations. They need to use our definition of affordability and that sort of thing. So there, we're not requiring them to commit to any particular number of units by this, and they really aren't offering a very specific number. But they are saying that they are willing and offering to do some. And this condition just says that when you get to the site plan and building plan approval stage and you're determining your final number of affordable units that you're going to offer, you need to use our definition and our administrative provisions to set those up.
Okay, so let me rephrase that just to see if I, I guess I'm understanding right. So they're, they're going to have to do maybe one or two units by thirty-four dash twelve and the formula in it. They've offered to do additional units up to a total of nine. And the condition we're adding is saying that if you give those, that you offer those units, then you must go through the same administrative procedures and terms as the required ones. And if you don't offer those units because you decided not to, because as just mentioned, you don't really like those administrative procedures, then they're still free to not do any of that.
That's right.
Got it.
And as a practical matter, that's the same result as if you didn't have this condition, because they're really not committing to anything, and we don't really know. We wouldn't have enforceable provisions, so they're really absent this condition. They really, we wouldn't have a way to enforce anything, and we don't even really have a definition of what they're proposing to do.
So when they put that paragraph into their application, like, it doesn't actually mean anything, it's not a promise. There's just nothing there really.
Let's ask Justin when he gets up. You want to, yeah, yeah, right. I've got a little heartburn about this now as well, so let's wait till we get the applicant, you can, you can quiz him when he gets up. Where was I? Who was, who was? Jody, Mr. Landry?
Yeah, where were we? I, I don't have any questions from Mr. Huluska. Thank you.
Council.
Oh, I had a question.
Oh, did I skip the game?
Yes, you did. Well, it's because I'm looking out for commissioners, Commissioner Stoltenberg did not ask Brian. I had a question about the, with special exception, is there a traffic study that is involved in this change, especially if you're raising the density? And then Rory didn't bring up anything about parking. I'm really shocked, but.
That's because they're reducing parking.
So I just had a question about that. Was that part of the process, especially as the neighbors are concerned?
The, the guidance that we have in the city is we do not require traffic studies for, I think it's for developments that do not generate more than five hundred trips a day. So the, this development, this new building would not do that. So they would not.
Thirty-four units does not do that.
No, 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 not even close. And eleven additional certainly doesn't, because you have an existing traffic pattern with the current thirty-four. So eleven, eleven apartments, the last time I looked at the IT manual, which was seven, several years ago, it's seven trips per day per apartment. Single-family residential detached.
All right, so there wasn't a study done because the actual increase was only eleven?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, eleven units.
Okay.
Back on track. It was, next was up was allow.
Yes. And public feedback, I've seen concerns about setbacks, I've seen concerns about height. And as I understand, the applicant is not requesting for changes to setback or height. Could you explain that?
That, that is correct. The building that they show is by right under the NCC district regulations. There's no required setbacks adjacent to zoning that is not low-density residential, which they are not adjacent to any low-density residential zoning. And they are allowed to build right up to the property line on the front. In fact, I think there's a requirement that they do for a portion of the building anyway. So, yeah, and the height is below the maximum of forty-one, forty-five feet in the district.
Okay. I think I've gone through everybody. Council, any questions for the staff?
Not for me.
Not at this time, thank you.
Questions for staff I had were addressed earlier, so no additional at this moment.
All right, Mrs. Schimpf, would you like to, or is someone from your organization going to present?
I'll be presenting tonight, Chair Mitchell. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. I'm just going to share my screen.
We see it. Well, we've got a presentation up.
Okay, perfect. All right, so I am just going to, my name is, I guess we'll start off, my name is Kelsey Schleim. I'm a planner with Schimpf Engineering. Justin Schimpf, the engineer on the project, is also joining me tonight. We're assisting the owner Piedmont Realty Holdings with this special use permit application. So we have a few slides prepared, just to go through the project a bit. But I'd like to just start off by responding to just a few questions and concerns that were raised by the commission. So I think in, in regards to affordable housing, the, the condition that's proposed in, in the narrative to have eighty percent of the units constructed, which is proposed to be nine units designated as affordable to those making up to eighty percent AMI. We put that in, in the narrative as a proposed condition with the full intent of constructing nine affordable units to that definition. And so, you know, however, we can move forward with a condition that has some teeth to it so that we actually construct that, we're, we're willing to do. But I just wanted to, you know, provide assurance and clarity that that was put in the narrative and the project narrative as a proposed condition for a reason, and because it was a commitment that this owner wanted to bring forward. And then another thing that I just wanted to hit on before just going through a few slides is, is the history on this property. And although I don't, although it's my opinion that it personally does not affect the evaluation of impacts from this proposed special use permit, I think it has been, it, it, it does deserve just, just some, some talking points, and it, it clearly is important to, to the commission to discuss this. So when Piedmont Realty Holdings acquired the property in February of two thousand and nineteen, it had been acquired from Core Real Estate and, and, and twelve of the units, when they were acquired by Piedmont Realty Holdings, had already, the rents had been varied to, to go to market rate. So when the property was acquired, eleven of the units were renting at less than market rate, but twelve were renting at market rate. All residents who, who, who had an interest and who, who had a history of paying relatively timely rent, were offered the, you know, the opportunity to, to move back in. And I, I think it is important, we did receive, we a few just quotes that I feel like are important to bring up from residents who lived there before, and then who moved back in. And so one tenant says, I never dreamed of living in an apartment that is this nice. The owner has not only allowed me to move into one of their renovated apartments, but they kept my rent the same, and they paid for my move. That's from a tenant who's lived there since two thousand and nine. Another tenant who lived there since two thousand and twelve said, the owner helped me move into a renovated unit with a new deck, and this has been a, a great place for me and my two sons to live. I like the neighborhood, and there's a lot of care put into making all of us more comfortable. So we can discuss that certainly more and more in depth if, if the commission feels it is necessary. But I, I did feel it was important to just touch on, on that since it was discussed. So now going into our slides and the, and the proposal for the eleven units that's, that's before you tonight. Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So the existing conditions, the, the views looking south and north on Monticello Avenue, this is just showing a general footprint location of the building, how the building is sighted on an existing entrance, an existing parking area. And so we're really just maximizing on existing impervious surface and taking advantage of, of a housing opportunity in this currently underutilized portion of the site. Next slide. So this is just showing the proposed building footprint in relation to the rest of the site. The existing entrance, as Brian previously stated, is proposed to be removed with this. And so just kind of, you know, establishing a more continued street frontage there along Monticello and lessening the, the breakup and the potential pedestrian conflict points with multiple entrance points to the site. Next slide. So this is the, the preliminary site plan that was submitted with a special use permit application showing how the parking will remain interior to the site. The proposed building will be taking advantage of that existing parking area as its future building site, and will be adding a parking space to comply with the city's parking regulations. That was certainly a concern that was brought up at the community meeting. Everyone wants to ensure that they have a convenient parking space and access to, to their residence. So we are not requesting any waivers to the, or, or any shared parking agreement that's not being pursued at this time, just complying with the ordinance as set forth in the city regulations. Next slide. And that's just more clearly called out some site elements, the just existing sidewalk network on, on the property and, and the building site. Next slide, please. So as far as the building footprint comparison, the scale of this building is, is pretty, pretty reserved. It's a, it's an approximately seventeen hundred square foot building footprint, and we just pulled some building footprints from nearby residences on Belmont Avenue from, from GIS to just show a, to scale comparison of the proposed building footprint with some existing footprints in the neighborhood. Next slide. And so the, this is the rendering of the proposed multifamily building. The team at Design Development, I think, did a, did an excellent job at. Uh, the team at Design Development, I think, did a, did an excellent job at, um, working with a scale, uh, that is certainly respectful along Monticello Avenue with just three stories proposed there, um, a little over thirty feet, with a very generous step back, uh, towards the rear of the site, increasing to the proposed maximum height of just over forty-one feet, which as Brian said, uh, is within the byright regulations of the neighborhood of, of the NCC district. Next slide. Um, and just a few more, uh, elevations and, and renderings here so you can see how the building would function internal to the site as well. Next slide. Um, so the, just to recap of the, of the project proposal, twenty-three existing units on the property with eleven additional units proposed, thirty-four units total for, for a density of forty-two dwellings per acre. It is our full intent for nine out of the eleven additional units to be designated as affordable to households making up to eighty percent AMI. And so, uh, again, uh, I'm sorry that our, our proposed condition in, in the project narrative perhaps didn't, uh, capture that commitment to affordability. Next slide, please. And so that's, um, all that I have for you. And we're, we're available, Jess and I are available for questions. Thank you.
Alright, why don't we just do the left to right thing? So we'll begin with, uh, the university. Uh, Mr. Palmer, any questions?
No, I'm good. Thanks for the presentations.
Ms. Russell.
Well, um, while I appreciate the building footprint comparison, I don't think that anyone is concerned about the scale of the footprint. People in the, uh, neighborhood are concerned about the, the height, the compatibility with adjacent, you know, buildings. And, um, yeah, I, I understand that, you know, it jumps from two stories abruptly and then, and then goes back down and that is giving me a little bit of, um, I'm having some reservation about that. I, maybe I missed this in the staff report, or just forgive me for my ignorance. I'm, I'm wondering, uh, how will affordability be offered, um, to residents? I mean, what is the, what, what typically a developer offers affordability? Because they're taking advantage of a subsidy and that's, you know, helping to, um, finance. In this case, how is affordability being provided?
So, and, and typically we're, we're kind of using the, the precedent that, that we often work with in, um, other localities. And the owner keeps records of, of the rent. And then at, upon request of the city, the housing coordinator, those records must be provided, uh, to, to the city to ensure that affordability as committed to in the special use permit condition, uh, are, are, are being adhered to. And if not, then the owner is in violation of the terms of their special use permit condition.
Yeah, I understand. That wasn't, that's not my question.
Sorry. Okay, okay, I meant to say.
My question is more so from a financial structuring, um, standpoint. What is, what is the incentive here in this developer's, um, you know, how, how is he affording this, uh, construction if it is not being subsidized through some sort of affordability component? Nine out of eleven units being offered at an affordable rate, how is he making a return on his investment?
Sure, I understood. And Jess and I see you want to say something, so I will also.
Yes, I'll, I'll jump in here real quick. This is I, I deal a lot in trying to build these small buildings. And I think, you know, part of it here is the, certainly a difference in, we're, we're using a pretty small, um, you know, underutilized, but not necessarily expensive portion of land, which is pretty unusual around here, right? Normally, the huge barrier to any kind of affordability is you can't afford the property, even barely for market rate units. But in this particular instance, the developer has the opportunity essentially to add on to this parcel without, uh, a lot of additional land bases. And I think that's what makes it, that's why he feels comfortable offering this level affordability. That may be, I'm sure that, that, you know, folks to come forward with housing vouchers and things, that's sort of a form of subsidy in a way, giving it even deeper affordability. But I think in this sort of instance, you can build this project without a additional subsidy for fairly unique reasons. Uh, but that's, that's what we think is happening. That's what, that is what's happening here.
Thanks. Um, those are my only questions.
Mrs. Tozenberg.
Thanks. Um, I always wonder if Commissioner Russell has any idea what Chair Mitchell's talking about when he says left to right, since she's never got to sit up there in a row next to us yet. Alright, so, uh, alright, let, let's start with, um, the existing units. Uh, cause I think what I just heard, uh, was promising and helped delay some of my concerns. And I'll say, you know, uh, up until, uh, that conversation, I was leaning pretty heavily towards no. So eleven of the units had not been reset to market rate at the time, uh, the current owner purchased the property. Ms. Schleim said that, uh, of those, uh, the ones that had a history of timely rent payments were offered the opportunity to return. So first question is, how many was, how many was that? And then the second question is gonna be, uh, how many actually, um, returned? And was their rent really kept the same, uh, for all of them? Uh, or just for the two whose testimonials we just heard?
Um, so I think I, I just, I, I provided the, the, you know, the, the tidbit about the tenants who had a, a standing history of, of timely rent payment. Because there were, um, there's three tenants who did not, uh, who were not offered the opportunity to move back in. And so I just wanted, uh, that, that to be clear, there, there was a reason, um, for, for that. There are, um, currently, let's see, I'm sorry, there are five, there are five long-term residents who have lived there, uh, who wanted to move back in and who, who lived there before Piedmont Realty acquired the property and who remain there today.
Okay, so eight were offered the return and then three declined, so five, five actually still live there?
Five, five long-term residents continue to live on the property, correct?
Okay, um, at the same rent they had before? Is that what you said?
Uh, so there are, um, four, and this kind of goes back to, to what Brian said. Four of the long-term residents are significantly subsidized, uh, three at six hundred per month rent abatement and one at three fifty. Um, so I'm, I'm, I, I do know that the, the one bedroom's rent for, for ten fifty. I'm not certain what the, uh, what the one kind of additional long-term resident currently pays. Uh, I would also, uh, you, again, uh, just bring up that, I, I think before these, these units were renovated, a lot of the tenants were paying three hundred dollars, several hundred dollars a month, uh, in utilities to pay for heating, um, in, in the wintertime. So, uh, although the, the base rent, uh, you know, the, the net rent may be, uh, more than it was before that they were renovated, the gross rent accounting for utilities, um, and especially given the fact that the owner does provide internet with the current rent, it, it, it isn't significantly more expensive than, than the gross rent, including utilities that, that were paid before. If that answers some of your questions.
Yeah, that, that was really helpful. Um, so rapid fire now. Uh, when you say six hundred, three fifty rent abatement, uh, is that a reduction on the rent, which is ten fifty for a one bedroom? Or is that, it's rent abatement, abated and so it is six hundred dollars?
Uh, that, that's a, uh, that is a good clarifying question and that is, that is the language that, that I have. And so unfortunately, um, I can't, uh, provide you with, provide a definite answer either way on, on what reading between the lines of, of the abatement means for, for those.
It typically means a reduction though. So if the rent is like ten fifty or eleven hundred, six hundred off would be about, you know, five, six hundred. Or if it actually is, happens to be six hundred, it's about the same. Um, but I believe it typically is used to mean a reduction in. But in this case, the math might work out pretty close to saying either way.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of what I figured for that one. Alright, so, uh, it bodes well, or poorly for answering this next question, which is why is the owner offering this rent abatement, uh, to these tenants?
It's, I mean, it's my understanding, uh, because of, of personal relationships that he developed with them throughout the renovation process. That's, uh, he, he knows these people, he knows how long they, they've lived there and, um, knows their financial constraints. And, and that's, that's my understanding as, as to why it's being offered currently. Uh, it's a personal subsidy, there's no, um, other subs, uh, other federal program or, or local program being taken advantage of to offer those abatements.
Okay, and, uh, what are the lease terms? Uh, are they on a lease now? Or could they be evicted next month potentially?
Um, I'm, I'm uncertain as to the terms of, of the current lease. Uh, but I'm, we're, we're, you know, over, we're almost two years into property ownership and we still have five, uh, tenants who, who are long-term residents and, and I imagine will, will want to remain in the future.
Okay, thanks. Um, alright, uh, so last sort of, sort of expansive question. You mentioned that, uh, utilities are much lower, which is a good segue into the point that I was gonna make, uh, which is that when you talk about, um, you know, rent, uh, affordability, right? Uh, when HUD makes those definitions of thirty percent of your income, utilities are, or at least core utilities are included in that amount. Um, so when you commit to eighty percent of AMI, um, are, is your intention that utilities are included?
Uh, I, I believe, I believe so. Um, I'm just looking at our definition, I don't think it, it, uh, clarifies between net or gross rent.
Okay.
I think that's been the historic, you know, way these things have been looked at on the projects. I'll say that, including the rent.
Including utilities.
Including utilities, excuse me, yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, certainly, uh, if we do come up with some way to make you abide by the standard operating procedures, um, that, that is gonna be part of that. Um, and so what I'm showing here, uh, is just the, uh, VHDA, uh, income amounts divided by twelve and multiplied by thirty percent. Um, and on the right, we have the same chart, uh, except the actual numbers end up differently. This is the, from the Affordable Housing Plan, so, uh, you don't think I'm totally making this up? I don't know why the numbers are different. Um, we'll have to talk about that later with them. But, uh, I mean, to answer Commissioner Russ, Commissioner Russell's question, you know, it seems to me that, uh, eighty percent, um, of AMI, uh, converted into rent, you know, assuming that you're, or depending on how you convert that into a unit size by household size, isn't significantly below market. Um, and, and so it does seem reasonable-ish, uh, that it would be financially supportable. So then I guess my second question, or however many questions it's been for you, is, uh, you know, how, how are those apportioned, uh, in terms of units to, uh, households? Like, if you've got a three-person household, uh, does that mean you get a, a two-bedroom, uh, for seventeen hundred a month? Um, or, or sorry, uh, for fifteen hundred dollars a month? Uh, or is that a three, alright, I'm getting a little confused here, sorry. Yeah, so is, is it, you know, one-bedroom reduction? Uh, or is it, uh, is it even by household size like it would be if we were in the SOP? Uh, or are you just saying, let's take, uh, you know, eighty percent AMI ignoring household size and, uh, and going from there? Like, what, what does eighty percent mean to you guys?
Thank you for netting the question out.
While counting, that was the seventh question apparently. Thank you.
I think, oh, well, so again, just drawing on past, you know, this, you all recall, I've been a part of a few of these projects. We've tried to go in with some affordable housing properties or conditions and it's sometimes complicated for the reasons we're discussing now, I think. Uh, that's why standardizing this would, you know, as far as, uh, you know, requirements, in the thirty-four twelve section, to pick up all these things would honestly be a lot cleaner than having to have these discussions all the time. But as it is, you know, we don't trigger the thirty-four twelve requirement, so with this building. So therefore we're trying to get to affordability a different way. And I, I think it's our understanding that, you know, it's per bedroom. We, we propose one-bedroom units. So we would expect that to be the, uh, household cap size. I see your point, right? I could, if I could fit three people into a one-bedroom unit, I could up the rent based on that household size. And I don't, that's not our intent to try to play some game like that. Uh, that's, uh, I also think it's just from a record-keeping standpoint, you know, keeping track of, oh, well, did, you know, did the, the boyfriend move in last month? Did that change the allowable rent and the reporting for city? It would be a lot cleaner to say, it's a one-bedroom, we go by the one, you know, unit. Here's the number. And then every year, reporting is done accordingly.
Okay, so, I mean, I agree that this would all be a lot simpler, uh, if we just had one policy and stuck to it. I have a, uh, on a screen, I'm not showing you guys a tweet, uh, that's from December 2018, where I say it's unclear, uh, whether the SOP, uh, will apply. But, you know, the SOP is also quite clear, uh, that the lesser of the high home rent limits, fair market rent, which is the forty-fifth percentile of recent movers, or thirty percent of the imputed household income for eighty percent will apply. So when you say that you want to subject yourself to thirty-four dash twelve, does it mean that you want to subject yourself to the rest of thirty-four dash twelve and not that paragraph? And, and so the other formula for calculating amounts that you suggested will apply?
I think how we phrased it is that we would go by what we have put into the, the application narrative, which is the calculation we provide, which is the eighty percent AMI on the area, which may be different than the, the other. If the commission decided they, you know, wanted to condition it differently, that, that's up, really, that's up to, planning commission, city council can impose conditions as, you know, seem fit. We put out there where we think this makes sense for us. It is a different number, I think. I can't remember how much different it is exactly, uh, but.
Yeah, so that's the problem, I guess. Because it sounds like council is telling us that, you know, we can impose a condition, but it doesn't actually mean anything because we're going beyond our legal authority in thirty-four dash twelve in that formula to apply it. So it, it really does matter, kind of what you're saying. And what you wrote in the paragraph in your application is that the very first year, it will be affordable at eighty percent AMI. And after that, it's going to increase faster than inflation and most likely not be affordable starting in year two, even at eighty percent AMI.
Cause of the three percent increase.
Three percent increase.
Yeah, I see, yeah. Well, that should be, I think the intent would ride with the inflation not above it.
We're gonna have to give some other guys a chance to get in the game, so.
All I got anyway.
Okay, good. Alright, Ian.
Uh, the only question I had was about the, the, uh, neighborhood input when you were, when you, uh, surveyed or polled and, and what the conversations were about the height and the, uh, this, the, the, uh, viewscape in the neighborhood. And is, um, is the, the new construction, um, within the, the setback for as high as it is, was there any kind of, um, understanding of how, because it's out closer to the road, it would really narrow the, the viewscape of the road? That's the only thing I see that's kind of funky about it.
So we, we did receive just a, a, a comment about would the building impact the, the visibility on the road? Um, that's how.
The canyon effect.
That's, yeah, we, uh, I, I don't recall in, in the neighborhood meeting and, um, you know, Ju- Justin and, uh, Brian were, were on it as well. Um, specific Vista comments. There was just a comment about when op, like, operating motor vehicle on the road would the proposed building height conflict with, uh, with, with site distance i- in, in some manner? Um, and so I, I think that's the only comment that, that we've been made aware of, uh, as far as, uh.
But not, not necessarily neighborhood aesthetic.
Uh, well, the, yes, I guess neighborhood aesthetic, I'm, I'm sorry. I think I was just focusing exclusively on, uh, on view sheds, um, but. But, I mean, I think there there were comments about just, you know, scale of building, the 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 setbacks, that that as well, that that did did come up. And this application isn't requesting, you know, any any waivers to to any of the established regulations and and the N C C in regards to setbacks in height.
Okay, Justin, Justin, did you make any alterations in design because of those concerns or comments, or did you, did you see them as well when when putting this together?
Yeah, two things, so, you know, one, just keep in mind, the building's only something like twenty feet wide at the street front. So this is a little bit unusual in that height, I think, will be kind of not noticed a whole lot because of that. But then we didn't, the comments about, there were several comments in the street, there is kind of, I guess, a somewhat limited visibility corner coming around there, but it's because of the the grade on the other side of the road. So you come around that corner, there is sort of a limited visibility, but our building will have no impact on that. We're only sort of outside of the curve, so it won't impact pedestrians and things. It was commented by one of the neighbors that when people park along that side of the road in front of this property, people slow down driving past it, which is a positive. So I think that's one of the things that we did hear. But the increased sort of street parking in that location will actually help with concerns about people going too fast in that section. I don't know how much of an issue that is, but it was brought up and it was discussed related to the on-street parking being a mitigating factor for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Soliet.
No question.
Mister.
No questions for Mr. Chimp or his assistant, no. For the architects, yeah, but they're not here, thank you.
All right, the only, yeah, the only comment I'll make, it's not a question, but just something to get my my colleagues thinking about it, maybe Ms. Ms. Robertson thinking about. The the applicant has suggested that they would be willing to accept some verbiage that allowed us to lend more teeth to the ability to have nine affordable units to this. So I can get behind this if in fact I'd get some sort of guarantee, if that's legal, if it's not, Ms. Robertson could stop me. I can get behind this if in fact we can do, you know, thirty four dash twelve and then in parentheses somehow under that guarantee the nine affordable units. So just something to think about as we get to that part of the meeting. Council.
I have no further questions at this time, thank you.
None for me.
So I have a couple, there's twenty-three existing units, correct? And then how many bedrooms are those?
I'm just pulling up our site to confirm the number of bedrooms.
I believe they're all two bedrooms, the existing one three bedroom.
One three bedroom. And that, well, there are, there's, yeah, so it's it's a mixture of, I don't have the exact breakdown of of one and two bedroom units. There are one bedroom units on the property with one three bedroom.
So of the roughly forty-six or so people who lived there, five currently remain?
Correct, who, yes.
So over ninety percent of the people who live there no longer live there?
Correct. Well, I'm.
I don't know how many, how many people are in each household that were came and left. It's, you know, so I don't I don't know that, we don't know that number.
Sure, yeah, I I would say five, these, the the five tenants that that we're aware of are all in in separate apartments.
Okay, so then the most conservative estimate, one person per unit, about eighty percent of people who live there no longer do. When you say rent abatement, are those five tenants, are they making use of vouchers or other subsidy programs?
Not to my knowledge, it was the the the, and and the owner isn't accepting the the vouchers. This isn't a a personal abatement between the tenant and and the property owner.
So it's a personal abatement and there's currently no tenants with housing vouchers?
I'm, I I can't speak to the, if 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 there are any tenants with housing vouchers, I'm I'm uncertain as to that.
Okay. This may be, this may be a question you're not able to answer either, but it was stated earlier that the applicant is not interested in making use of existing subsidy programs or partnerships with nonprofits in order to provide affordable units, why is that?
Was that, and was that stated when when Brian said that?
I believe so.
Okay, I'm I'm uncertain to that as well, I mean, I would just imagine it's an experience or a lack of perhaps an introduction to those organizations. I don't believe the 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 door is cool, would be closed on on that opportunity.
Okay, because I just know in, you know, in in our experience, I think it's pretty clear that it's not possible to construct affordable units at lower AMI levels for a long period of time without making use of either those nonprofit partnerships or making use of subsidy programs. Those are all the questions I had, I guess the final comment I would just make relates to the the architecture of the building. I do think the design is dramatically out of place, not just in scale, but in terms of its basic architecture with the units there. And and I would just comment that, you know, certainly if I was living in those units, my impression of that building would be perhaps this is the first phase of a three-phase project to either remove or completely reconstruct the other two buildings in order to build a complex of boutique luxury apartments in the heart of Belmont downtown.
Great, thank you, Mr. Rice, we are ready to open up for public comment.
Anybody in the lobby that would like to speak?
If anybody would like to speak for this public hearing, please raise your hand, and we do have a few hands raised. First is Mr. James Rucker. Mr. Rucker, you're on with commission.
Welcome, you've got three minutes. And it was Mr. Rucker and Mr. Cabot that were having difficulty getting on before, and it looks like they're having difficulty again.
Appears so, Mr. Rucker, I don't know if you've referenced the phone number that was there earlier, I can send that out again. Seems like we are still having issues with him.
And while we're waiting for Mr. Rucker and Mr. Cabot, if you could, I want to re-move on.
Mr. Cabot, you're now on with commission.
They able to hear me this time?
We do, thank you.
Some of the issues I was concerned with have been addressed, I'm just gonna go down my list of items. First, I want to say the S U P does not need to be automatically granted. It's not like getting a driver's license is a privilege, not a right. Architecturally, should fit into the neighborhood, not stick out like a sore thumb. Concern with height and does not, does building fit into the traditional neighborhood style? I'd be a little less concerned about it if it was more of a traditional style building than what's being proposed. Parking, I believe, is going to be a concern, I don't believe there will be sufficient parking. And parking on the street can be very difficult in that area. Difficulty for larger vehicles in the parking area, if someone used to drive a large vehicle, I wouldn't want to get caught back in there. And on my street, we've had numerous times, because it's a dead end street, we've had numerous times where people have had their cars hit, and most of the times they don't know who it is that did it. Lose it's a vehicle, a large vehicle that comes down the street, that gets caught in the street and doesn't know that it's a dead end street, basically. How long will affordable housing last? Is this really a carrot to get the S U P? Since the complex has already, is already coming in, may the length for, of making the life affordable is the project being used to offset a development elsewhere? What are the numbers? What will the postscript footage of the units be? That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, you got it.
Okay, up next, we will take Kimber and Hockey, you are now on with commission, three minutes.
Kimber and Hockey, welcome, three minutes.
Am I muted?
No, we got you, we can hear you.
Can I just ask, before before I start talking, I'd like to know how many people have actually been to that site? Who are present?
Yes, about everybody.
Everybody, okay. Well, I first want to also address the history of the the new owner of that, the Belmont Heights. They actually did evict the previous tenants, I think, Michael, you were in the protest march about that. There were elderly and handicapped that were evicted, they didn't leave voluntarily, they were evicted from that site. There was one elderly lady who was blind, who complained greatly about being evicted and the stress about having to leave. She was not allowed to move back in and she actually passed away shortly thereafter, so that's the other side of the coin. First of all, this is a historic error area on the National Register of Historic Places, it's got historic buildings and residential character. The N C C that exists there does, but the true intent of that code was to allow for small scale mom and pop businesses and not for this type of building. It's obvious as well that the project is inappropriate because they're offering so many affordable units. In the past, it was always, oh, we can only do one or two, that's all that's financially feasible, but all of a sudden, nine out of eleven, maybe, because now it sounds from the discussion that who knows how many units will be affordable in the end. There doesn't seem to be a real guarantee or commitment to, or an enforceable commitment to those units. We all know what intent means, I E., you can't enforce it. This nine out of eleven unit, it's a bait for the P, for the planning commission and council to accept an inappropriate development. You know, in the end, we might end up with a bunch of shoo, shoo, shee, shee apartments in the heart of Belmont. So there's no accountability, no guarantees, and so how can you pass such an inappropriate building? In the past, in this area, there have been promises regarding buffers, setback, parking. These all have been violated in our area, as if you know your history, you will know what I'm talking about. How do you intend to enforce promises this time? The other big question is about affordability, eighty percent of AMI in Charlottesville is well over a thousand dollars a month. So I'm not, I personally don't find that affordable. As in addition to that, how long will they be affordable? In my opinion, they should be affordable in perpetuity, but, you know, again, that's that's a big question. History has shown us that the intent is not enforced. It was stated in the discussion that the development is currently in violation of its buy right density. So my big, my big question is, why are they not being penalized for that, rather than allowing them an S U P to go even further down that road? That seems strange. Lack of accountability again. So basically, the new owner and developers, they're looking to cram a three to four story building on a hill. The architecture and height is radically different from the surrounding buildings and they're cramming it into a driveway area and part of a small parking lot. The building will block off an ingress and egress, and this was precisely the topic of multiple resident comments last year, I believe it was, against doing that. And at the time, the city assured us that, oh, there would be no closing off of ingress egress when there were safety issues involved. This is a safety issue, safety visit vehicles or big, big vehicles cannot, like a fire truck couldn't get in and out of there. So there's the problems of traffic flow, lack of setback, lack of parking, loss of parking in the current parking lot, and little on-street parking possibilities, impact on the resident experience, and issue of safety is all at all of concern here. I'm surprised that no traffic study is done, it's very important for everyone to remember that we're looking at Cap Shop supposedly to be doing another huge development right, right there, right next door. And I believe it was over nine hundred car trips a day for that development. So, you know, this, this is just the first of a domino effect in that area. I would just ask that the planning commission consider all of these very real realities for residents here in this neighborhood and show some concern for our safety and quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rice.
Okay, it looks like we still have Mr. Rucker that is going to attempt to join us one more time. And Mr. Rucker, you're on with commission, are you there? It looks like we're having audio issues. Mr. Rucker, if you can hear us, just please unmute.
Yes.
And we, I did send along the phone number and meeting ID in case you need to use that, sir.
While we wait, I was hoping we could just review the street view that's being discussed. Can you see my screen? This is the, this is looking from, you know, kind of the the commercial corridor of Belmont, there is the existing building. And so when I just, you know, I think it's important to understand that when, yes, this is a narrow building, but we'll be looking at its, one in in Belmont, we'll be looking at it from an angle and therefore seeing more of its height and facade than than actually when right up close to it. And I I, you know, I think residents are right when they are stating their concern about the the views from the the views, the scale. And yes, this is in a National Register Historic District, though not in a Design Control District.
Okay, two points, both a matter of protocol. I, thank you, I think that was very, that's very helpful to look at. Usually during public hearings, we just kind of let the public talk and we don't interrupt them and engage. I do appreciate that you were, and I am grateful that you were filling time while we try to figure out, Mr. Rucker, just just so you know, in the future, we just kind of let the public go. And a wonderful opportunity to do what you just did, and again, it was very helpful, would be after the public is finished and then we start going around doing the roundtable amongst ourselves, but we'll get this, we'll get this figured out.
Looks like we have Ms. Williams that is here with us, and Ms. Williams, you are now on with commission.
Hi.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
We can, you've got three minutes, Julia, thanks.
Hi, thank you, thank you, commissioners and planning commission. I would like to echo some of the previous comments, the architecture is a significant one, certainly for me. The the fact that the, I'm sorry, I'm just reading it today for the first time, but it doesn't sound like there's much that's enforceable about the affordable housing in the existing units, so that really can't be weighed as a compelling reason to offer the S U P, it seems. It's only what they're offering with the new development, it's a shame that we can't offer eighty eighty percent of the total complex, but I understand it's eighty percent of the additional units. But anyway, I think that find that a little bit heartbreaking in that we, in two thousand nineteen, just recently lost so much affordable housing, I wish this could be more of a leverage point and not using a voucher program or something that maybe can be extended for multiple, you know, really guaranteed is this is a long term affordable housing. I I'm not quite sure what the solution there is, but it does seem like that's a really major concern. The other thing is that if there's any way to include in this accessible housing, I think we have a deficit of that as well. So I don't know if first floor units are considered as accessible, but we're certainly not seeing in the parking layout an indication of accessibility, so that would be another concern. And then just a quick question, I attend the Neighborhood Association meetings and I know this did not come to the Neighborhood Association. So was the neighborhood input you got from a formal meeting that went to the whole neighborhood or just to the residents within five hundred feet? How was this brought to the neighborhood, is what I'm asking?
Um, we're not gonna get into a back and forth, we may address that after.
That's all I have, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we do have Mr. James Rucker on the phone with us, so we will attempt to patch him in. Mr. Rucker, are you with us? Please unmute by pressing star six. Mr. Rucker, if you can hear us, please press star six to unmute. Chair Mitchell, I'm not sure if you can hear us or not.
In the meantime, is there anyone else in the lobby that would like to speak? And if you're answering me, you are muted. And if you're answering me, you are muted, sir. Mr. Rice.
And it looks like we do have two Jackson with us and you are on with commission. You have three minutes.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm not clear. Is this, um?
You are. We can hear you.
I wanted to echo my, uh, concerns that have been expressed by Mark Cabot and Kimber and Julia relative to all of these aspects, the affordable housing, the architecture, the height, uh, the egress, um, the safety issues, which I guess is the egress, the parking. Uh, it just doesn't seem to me that those issues have been addressed in a way that is appropriate for potential, uh, residents and for the existing neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, I, that's great. Do we have Mr. Rucker?
I have Mr. Rucker on the phone, so he's going to speak through my computer.
Fantastic. Thank you, Missy.
Very good.
All right. Thanks a whole lot. Appreciate it. This, I guess this is addressed to, uh, Mr. Schimpf and, um, Ms. Schlein. I, I, uh, my wife and I own ten twenty-two Carlton Avenue. It's across from Peacock Garage and we, we bought it in two thousand and six and we renovated it. And, um, I've always kind of had a water problem there. It's, it's not like, um, it's not terrible, but it's when it rains really hard, we get water in the basement. And about five to 10 years ago, I was getting a lot of water in the basement, more than I'm getting now, but I'm still getting it. And I put some dye in the stormwater, uh, uh, drain for the parking lot of Belmont Apartments and the dye came through in my apartment. And so I know that I get water from, from the Belmont Apartments, uh, property. And I'm still getting it. And I just wondered if you guys could, uh, possibly as part of the SUP, you know, agree to work on the stormwater, all the stormwater that comes off your property, not just from the parking lot. Because the smaller of the two buildings, um, the closest one to me, that, that water from the, the roof on both sides actually goes into the, um, into the lawn just up the hill from me. And I, I'm sure that that's part of my water problem and, um, and I know I'm, I'm taking the focus away from affordable housing, which I think is important also, but, uh, but I, I, I think I, um, I, I really wanted to see if you guys could address this. Now stay on the line. I'd love to talk about it. Thank you.
We are, um, in a public hearing session and so we typically do not have a back and forth. We may have a chance to chat about that after the public hearing. So, um, Mr. Schip, if you just note that, uh, maybe I, if we've got time, I'll give you a chance to comment on that. And Mr. Hulsk, I'll give you an opportunity to remind people how we noticed this as well. Um, the other app, um, the other, um, the other speaker asked about that as well. Let's get through the public hearing before we start going back and forth.
Okay. Oh, sorry about the left.
Mr. Rice.
And if there's anybody else in attendance that would like to speak on this matter, please raise your hand. I see no other hands raised.
Let's see, where are we? We are, um, now back to us. So very quickly, out of respect to the two questions that we got, um, Brian, can you remind us, you know, how we noticed this and do we go beyond the five hundred feet parameter? How, how does that work?
Uh, so for these, in, in the, the current situation, typically for a public hearing, we have two required notifications that we do per state code, which is a mailing to anyone, any landowner within five hundred feet of the property as well as an advertisement in a paper record. Um, we, in the current times, have been adding to the five hundred foot mailing, um, all addresses within five hundred feet. So not just people who own property, but also people who reside in that area who may be renters. Uh, additionally, we do signs on the property. I know we were talking about that in the pre-meeting. Uh, we post those, uh, it's, it's mentioned in our city code. It's not a state code requirement, but we do that. Um, I was looking at the, uh, address mailing list on my computer just a few minutes ago. Um, we had the Belmont Carlton Neighborhood Association. We have a PO box for it. Um, so that would have been where the letter went. If that's incorrect, then obviously we need to, um, have the, somebody, a representative of that neighborhood association, uh, reach out to our office or the city manager's office and the, the address as to where it should be going.
You know, I'll come back to you all soon and then I'll go to Justin. Regarding the runoff issue, is that more of a site plan issue or, or what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Rucker several days ago regarding, uh, this issue and, and that's kind of what I mentioned was the, the site plan, this, the special use permits really about the additional density on the site, which, uh, there is some question about, you know, if, if this building, if this building's built on top of an existing hard surface, the stormwater impacts from the actual construction of the building are probably going to be zero in terms of the overall capacity. But I did make, uh, Mr. Schimpf and Ms. Schlein aware of Mr. Rucker's concerns regarding that property. And if there were, was an opportunity to do something about that issue that would come up in the site plan issue. Um, and obviously what we kind of mentioned was anytime if, if construction is going to happen, that's the time when you're going to be able to do the best amount of work on this. Um, there's also the question of whether or not the existing system, uh, that may be on there. This is a complex built in nineteen seventy-three. Um, but if there's any, you know, existing issues with that, that current system as to how it's operating and where it's putting the water, um, or any easy changes that can be made. Sometimes it's just rerouting downspouts. Um, that we could certainly have, uh, potentially have our engineering staff or somebody in the course of a site plan, um, visit the site and look at what other options are out there.
The, um, before I give Justin a chance to speak, I don't think I closed down the public hearing. Mr. Rice, there was no one else left, right?
If anybody else would like to speak on this matter, please raise your hand or if you're joining us by phone, press, press star nine. No hands raised, Chair.
All right, with that, we will close the public hearing. Forgive me for that breach of protocol. Um, Justin, any thoughts?
Uh, yes, I think, well, first off, I'll, I'll be sure to go see, uh, the neighbor, Mr. Rucker there in the next week and just see what's going on. I think there probably are some things we can, we can do. So that's, that's fine. We'll look at that. And Brian's right, it's a site plan issue, but we want to be good neighbors. Um, we'll, I'll go see him, see what happens, see what's going on. And I think, you know, it sounds to me like there's a pretty serious concern among a few folks with the architecture of the building. I don't know if that, you know, if we're, we're out, there's no design control district here. But at the same time, we're not opposed to changing that either. So if that's something that can be conditioned or some, you know, following the architecture, we don't mind amending that. I'd be taking, you know, deferral and coming back and addressing that. Cause I think, uh, there's some questions about that and we feel like we could answer them if that's something that the planning commission thinks makes sense. And same thing also on the housing, it's, there's also some lack of clarity at the moment in what a condition would be. And we don't want that to be a, a concern for anyone either. So yeah, I defer to you all in some ways to tell, tell me what you think is best, but if necessary, we're happy to take a quick break on this, work with the staff, um, on clarifying what the condition is that everyone feels comfortable and everyone agrees to what it means. And that can come back forward to the planning commission. You all may or may not, you know, agree with it, but at least there'd be no doubt. I mean, anybody of what we're saying and how it being enforced. So I, that's my two big takeaways from what I've heard so far. I, I do feel that the other items, traffic, parking, uh, are not really issues in this particular project. But the, uh, architecture and then clarifying affordability, uh, we would not want to be a cloud of the project for those things being unresolved when they could be.
With the permission of my colleagues, I would like to suggest that, from my perspective, some, some, some sort of language that's got teeth in it, some sort of language that, that, that you're going to have to live with no matter what, uh, regarding affordable housing and nine units being included at those board, affordable housing units. And some, some terms, some, some guaranteed number of years would make your application a little stronger from my perspective. I would, if I, and I'm going to put Joe, uh, Mr. Alejandro's pot. I would like to get his thoughts on the architectural stuff. I know the architect is here, but I think he's got some insight that would be of value to us on the architectural piece.
You've been reading my mind, Chair Mitchell. Um, I've been waiting for the opportunity to say it at the appropriate time. Um, I have no problem with the increased density, uh, that's being requested. I do have a problem with the architecture. And I believe that we do have the right to, um, as a commission, to express our concerns through the, uh, potential adverse impacts on, and particularly the massing and scale of the project. Um, the, with all due respect to staff, I would disagree that, um, because the Virginian Industries for the blind, uh, building, uh, is also tall, that that, um, means this can also be tall. Um, the difference to me is that that tall portion of the Virginia, uh, Industries for the blind building is over a block away. Uh, it also sits back about twenty-five feet from the sidewalk. There are trees in that land, landscaped area, lawn area. This building that's being proposed is less than five feet away from the sidewalk. And there is no opportunity for putting trees to help mediate the, the architecture. And in fact, the architecture is designed in such a way as to emphasize its height with the vertical windows and the dark, um, areas joining them together in these tall vertical stripes. Um, five, less than five feet away from the sidewalk. Uh, that is just, uh, completely different than the context that it's being designed in. Um, and while the historic, the, 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 the state and national register historic district for Belmont, I don't believe includes this particular site. It looks like it, it, it is across the street and goes up to Bain Bridge and then continues on the other side of this site. Um, but we're still in the context of this his, national and, uh, state historic, uh, district. Um, and I have to, uh, agree with, uh, uh, Counselor Payne. It does look to me suspiciously like the beginning of a long series of developments that, uh, a development of the site that will change the architecture completely. Um, so I, I have, uh, serious concerns architecturally with the project. But as I said, I, I, uh, don't have those same concerns with the, uh, the density request. Thank you for the opportunity, Chair.
So Justin, would you like us to continue or would you like to, is there something you'd like to do here?
Well, I, I'd be happy to accept the deferral on the project. And if anyone else wants to make any, uh, last helpful comments as were just made, uh, that's always useful to us. I, I think, uh, you know, I'm getting, I certainly understand the architectural standpoint where folks are coming from. Um, but anything else folks want to add in?
Let me go from left to right and see what folks have to say.
Yeah, could we, could we plan on having a discussion about it since we've all kind of prepared tonight with the understanding that that's probably going to be the outcome here?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what we're doing. That's why I'm going from left to right. So everyone can speak up. So, um, Bill, anything?
Good, thanks.
And Liz?
Um, well, I, I apologize for the, uh, breach in protocol of interrupting the public session. Um, I, I, I think my, um, oops, I didn't mean to share that. I didn't know where my Mac went. But you know, uh, I guess if we're looking, if we're talking, if we're asking the applicant to consider the architecture, can just consider the context and consider the, um, surrounding historic district. Um, it would be with the awareness, um, that it will be prominently viewed from that historic commercial core. Historic, new buildings in a historic district should not look old, but they should be in keeping with, with all the things that, uh, Commissioner Alejandro spoke to. So, uh, I, I would want to see that moving forward.
Great.
Um, okay. So before I say, uh, my opinions, I'd like to add that there was one comment in the public hearing, uh, that was kind of a question. Um, that wasn't part of the ones we've mentioned. Uh, and it was about accessibility. Um, and I was hoping, um, either, uh, Mr. Hulsk or Mr. Schimpf could, uh, or Ms. Schlein could, uh, go through the accessibility requirements under the Fair Housing Act, um, and in particular tell us whether it's a walk-up or an elevator building.
Uh, you quickly, it's a, it's a walk-up building. So all the first floor units would be accessible in a new construction.
Great, thanks. Um, and that's required by federal law as I understand it. Um, so, uh, all right, we're to start. Uh, quickly, I'll talk about architecture, um, which as you all know, is probably not my, uh, you know, top issue here. Um, but these trees are on this old church property. Um, and it seems to me that those screen, uh, the thing, uh, what you guys are talking about. Um, and to me, I mean, we're talking about three stories on street level. Um, I, I think if we're afraid of three stories at street level, um, we're, we're kind of be in a pretty bad shape if we actually, you know, want to build housing in this town and end our affordability crisis. Um, I'm totally happy with changing what the facade looks like or materials or whatever.
Building housing in this town is not going to solve the affordability crisis. So, you know, let's just understand that. We're not going to solve it by adding, only adding bedrooms, right?
No, you need to build more housing and solve, uh, the unaffordability of market rate housing, um, and then add subsidies, uh, for deeper AMI levels. Um, which I guess is really getting at my point here. Um, a couple, uh, people have talked about, um, you know, the high percentage affordability, uh, or of, not proffered, but offered, uh, affordable units, uh, nine out of eleven. Um, and said that makes it seem implausible. Um, and I, I just want to go back to, uh, you know, what those actual numbers are in terms of rent. Um, where for a two-bedroom apartment at eighty percent, and at eighty percent AMI, that's sixteen ninety in monthly rent. Um, and I mean, the fact of the matter here is that market rate, uh, for an apartment versus a house, um, is often affordable at that workout, workforce housing level. Um, that's why we need to focus our subsidies and our efforts on, uh, lower, uh, AMI levels. Um, because again, those are, those are much, much harder to reach. Um, and so, uh, we do solve that affordability problem at the eighty percent level by building apartments, which are more naturally affordable, um, just on the market, uh, than, uh, you know, less dead sports forms of housing. Um, and I mean, to me, that, that really makes it, uh, odd to me that the nine, uh, you know, new units are being offered as affordable. Um, when, you know, you're not really giving us that much for those, uh, but what you are doing, um, apparently totally of your own volition, uh, because of personal relationships, um, is holding five apartments at a deeply affordable level, uh, at thirty percent AMI, uh, or even below. Um, and I, I mean, I would really like to see some way of making sure that those last and aren't fully conditioned on, uh, you know, the good heart of, uh, Drew Holsworth. Um, you know, not that there's, uh, you know, I guess apparently he's done a lot better than I thought he did, uh, based on the media. Um, and over half the problem happened before he bought the place, uh, from the previous owner who bought it from the towing people. Um, but, uh, I mean, that's the real affordable, like actual affordability that you're offering here. Um, and it sounds like it's happening anyway. Uh, so I guess I'm a little confused about why you wouldn't just put that in the thing. Um, I mean, I guess it's something about paperwork and adhering to it or something, but, uh, that's a little confusing to me. Um, but, uh, I mean, I note again, this is, this is an SUP for density. Um, not for height, not for setbacks, all of which are prescribed by right in the NCC zone. Um, and I, I, I think we need to make our decision on that front. Um, and to me, uh, you know, building more housing, uh, you know, cramming housing onto driveways and parking lots, uh, is exactly what we need to be doing in the city, uh, both for our housing crisis and for our climate crisis, um, where that land needs to be used more efficiently. Um, and, and allow people, uh, to live in places like this that are rich in amenities and walkable and great. Um, and I, I really don't think that it's going to destroy the neighborhood to build this. Um, you know, my biggest problem was with that, like section three of the, uh, you know, SUP, uh, evaluation conditions, which is displacement of existing residents. Um, I think the extent that when you come back I think the extent that when you come back, you can. You know, well, A, we can independently validate, you know, those testimonials you gave us. And, you know, maybe Seville tomorrow, we'll go back and do a follow up story and tell us what really happened. But, you know, it's certainly better than what it seemed to be the status quo a little bit ago and B. You know, if if you can actually get some assurances about those into. Whatever proper statement or whatever it's called that you put together, but. It kind of sounds from staff that like, no matter what you offer, we're not going to be able to hold you to it, which is extremely distressing. And this whole system is broken and sucks and.
Gary.
Thank you. I I think everybody has the the same old. Points that we go back to in terms of aesthetic and architectural review and neighborhood continuity and. But I guess the thing that's troubling me most is we have someone who's trying to address what they have heard the. The city and the leadership and the council saying about affordable housing. Okay. And the way this developer has tried to address it is to up the number of. Apartments that would be offered at least initially. For affordable housing. And. Jose, when you say more teeth, I I think it's also more clarity. On how how do we provide developers? With what we what we're looking for so they can come before us with something that's not. Yeah, that we that we shoot full of holes every time.
Well, the good news is the consultants are listening, so.
So and so what I would say to Justin is I I do think it's going to be deferred tonight. I think that. We need to get our act straight about what what we're looking for with affordable housing. And finally, my age old issue that. And I, this is where I, Rory, you you spoke the truth. This is a growing city. It is going to have to go up. And. So we just have to find a way to use the language that allows us to do that. That's all.
I didn't realize this was a design review panel. I'm having a heart attack here.
I know.
Yeah, if we're so troubled by by right density, we're going to have a really hard conversation when we talk about actually addressing affordable housing in this city. The that that height is by right, the setbacks are by right. That design that can do whatever they want. If they want to build a mansion that looks like just a black box. They can do that. Please don't. But yeah, that that's your right. I'm not saying it's not broken. I'm not saying it's not stupid, but them them the law. Given the current circumstances and what we're talking about here, which is eleven new homes. Eighty percent affordable is pretty good. That's a lot better than we normally see, and that's exciting to see. I'd like to see more of that. That actually gets us towards our four thousand that we're in the hole on. That would be. Great to to make that kind of progress. I'm pessimistic on that right now. Due to our budget crisis and things kind of falling apart in a few ways. But. Yeah, mining free land for affordable housing in general, pretty good idea, putting it next to a school near shops, near, you know, exciting places to be where you don't need a car. Pretty great. I was disappointed to see that it's fully parked, but I'm not shocked that the neighborhood wants it to be fully parked. There is a, you know, there's there's a dynamic tension there. If you build it, they will come. If you're scared of people driving, parking is a good way to make sure people drive. If people have to pay to park, they might buy a car to put there. Eventually, long term, we have to do something about climate change and parking is not going to get us there. Broadly excited to see this. I'm told by the consultants that ten years is not. A useful number of years to be thinking about for affordable housing. We should be thinking about ninety nine years. Which we've never discussed on this virtual dais or even the real dais. I'm interested to know if that's possible in the real world or if that's just consultant math. If it is real, ninety nine years would be very exciting to see eighty percent, ninety nine years. Oh, my God. But who who knows? We will see.
Jody, do you have anything else? Anything else to add?
No, but well, just to point out that this because the we are given the right as the commission to. Discuss adverse impacts, possible adverse impacts and. There the the whereas the law of the right or by right heights. And setbacks maybe are are general for a district, but this. Given this right to. To to discuss the impacts of any SUP application is an acknowledgement that every development is unique. To the particular site and to the particular context and one size does not fit all. Thanks.
So Rory seems a bit dubious about our ability to craft some sort of language. That would lock us into nine affordable units. I frankly think it can be done and I'm hoping that. That Justin and team will work with Brian and team and Lisa to to craft some language that guarantees us. The nine units of those eleven units that we need. And locks it in for term that is a time period, a term that is is reasonable. So with that, I'm going to ask counsel if they've got me in, but Michael, what do you think?
I would, I would just mostly agree with what Mr. Alejandro said earlier. I mean, my major concerns are clarity around. AMI levels, length of affordability and. The enforceability of it as well as the aesthetics and the architecture. Not just the height, but I think the design of the building is just dramatically out of place with those other two buildings in the area and. I do think that the built environment matters. And I would just final last comment would just be, I know it's not always feasible and much easier said than done, but. The only way we get it really even fifty sixty percent of AMI is partnerships with nonprofits like the land trust. Or other housing nonprofits in order to get at those lower AMI levels and have it be for a longer length of time. Because the reality is if we're building a couple of units at eighty percent of AMI for ten years, they can all go to young professionals making fifty thousand dollars a year. And make functionally no impact at all on affordable housing, perhaps a very small modest impact for young professionals, but that's it.
Heather, what are you thinking?
I think most of the the thoughts that I had and the concerns that I would have raised have been covered. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of of my colleagues and planning commissioners. I really, it really for me just looks at this, the appropriateness of this and was it really going to be achieving the goals that we set out for it to achieve and how we strike that balance? So I don't have any any further comments beyond that.
I have two questions. The first question is, how are the affordable units going to be different? If at all, from the non affordable units?
You can go ahead, Justin.
Well, in this kind of building, I I suspect I can't, I don't know this for certain, we can answer this next time around, but. You're going to build every unit kind of the same per floor. So if we have, you know, nine out of eleven, essentially you would not build different units to make them affordable. It would be. Going backwards as far as saving money in that regard. So you would build them all the same.
And and basically just two people get a discount.
Well, in this case, nine do.
Well, okay, no, yeah, nine get a discount, two do don't, yeah. I wonder, would it be possible or desirable? Or would it get us closer to any goal? Supposing you said, we're only going to make seven of them affordable. We're all going to make it. We're going to make them all sixty percent AMI. We know that the problem is in the marketplace is not really getting more eighty percent AMI units, though that is a problem. It's not the problem. The problem is is trying to go for deeper affordability. And I wonder if if you, if there could be a balancing, to readjust the balance, if we go to a deeper affordability rating.
We can look at that between now and next time. I know my experience matches what counselor Payne, I've heard him say many times, the problem is once you get below. Eighty percent, you really, you just not doable without a government subsidy, basically. That's how these things are built, which is not, which is. Good, but it can happen. I think the goal of this is to try to make the. Affordability to the extent you can without that subsidy, that subsidy used for other projects. And still achieve some affordability here, but I understand your question. I will, we will look at that.
And and please understand that I'm using the seven versus nine and sixty versus eighty without any thought to the math and you all can do the math and figure out what works. But it it would be a greater benefit to more, it would be a greater benefit, I think, to Charlottesville. If we could any way we possibly can get some deeper affordability into into the situation. And if it, if we've got an opportunity here with a trade off to where you get more market rate units, again, you can do the math and figure out what works and maybe it doesn't work at all, but. I think that would be an interesting study to run and you, I'm sure you've got the spreadsheet that could do it.
Okay, yeah, understood.
All right, with that, Justin, what would you like to do?
Well, if the commission wants to take a vote to defer, I'm happy with that.
Ms. Ms. Robertson, we don't need a vote, we just need to ask for a deferral, is that right? Or Ms. Chrissy, somebody guide me?
Um, it would probably be best if you voted. The applicant is suggesting that. That would be fine with him, so he's agreeable to it. So just to avoid any. Normal timelines, why don't you go ahead and have somebody make a motion and take a vote on it?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we. Defer this application.
Second.
Moved in properly, second, any further discussion? Ms. Chrissy, would you poll the board?
Sure, Mr. Alejandro.
Hi.
Mr. Solah Yates.
Hi.
Miss. Mr. Heaton.
Hi.
Mr. Stolensberg.
Hi.
Ms. Russell.
Hi.
And Mr. Mitchell.
Hi. Right, so we should hold her. Thank you. Thank you very much. My teeth are floating. So I'm going to take a five minute break. Hopefully you guys will as well. We'll come back, we'll have the consultants on, so five minutes and then we'll begin with the consultants. Okay?
Good luck with your teeth.
Apologies for my tone. I got a little steamed there. Not appropriate.
Wow. What did you get steamed about?
The this design stuff, nothing against design review, it's just we weren't doing that.
I'm going to leave that alone. Who's not back? I can't see. We've got this a. Joe, can we go back to the individual thingies? Or is it me that did that? Did I make this view this way?
It changes, I think, when screen sharing changes. There should be a gallery view button on the top right.
Yeah, I want to be able to see who's back. Liz, Gary, Jennifer's here, Rory's here. Everybody's here, right? Yeah.
Yeah, we lost Tania, right?
Who did we lose?
Tania, she had to go for the thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Tania's gone. All right, Ms. Chrissy, I think we are ready to begin. I think. This is going to be an update and it's going to be a dialogue between us and the consultants. And I think. Jenny, you're leading this meeting, are you not? And you're, oh, we can't hear you. And you're not on mute. Hey, Joe.
Who do?
Joe, we hear you.
Jenny, you might want to check your audio settings. Looks like she's trying that.
Rough day for audio today.
There she is.
Oh, you got me?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Great. Well. Thanks for having us. Shall I? Shall I go ahead and get started then?
Yeah, we're all ready for you.
Great, okay. So I'll let Joe, I believe, bring up the presentation. Great, okay. Uh, so I'll let Joe, I believe, bring up the presentation and then I will, uh, see if I can.
You should be prompted now, Jenny. Do you see it?
Oh, yeah, okay. It says I'm controlling your screen, but I don't see the slides up. I see that there's a counter.
It looks like we're using, looking at your desktop, but no application.
I, I shared the wrong thing. Let's, uh, try this again. My apologies.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's better.
So let's see, I'll make sure. Okay, great. Thanks, Joe. Uh, so uh, we've got some slides up here. These were included in, in the packet. I did make a few small tweaks this morning to add the final public engagement numbers since we gave you the draft slides before we finalized engagement. So I'll point those out. I know we've been talking, or you all have been talking a lot about housing and affordable housing tonight, uh, the, which is obviously very important. But the goal today is, you know, we are trying to think about, I want, I want to give you an overview of our engagement process and some initial thoughts on that. And then I, we want to start thinking about next steps related to land use. So I want to note upfront, um, our housing, uh, team members are not on the call with us tonight. HRNA is not here. So I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that, since I know we're in kind of a housing mindset. But if there are questions, we're happy to work with you to pass those along. Uh, in terms of engagement, so we had an engagement process through November, as I'm sure you are well aware. The public comment period ended December second, after, after December second. And so what we had out at that point was the draft Affordable Housing Plan and the draft initial comprehensive plan revisions. Uh, we, you know, to let people know about these opportunities, we had a variety of different outreach methods. I think we've already talked with you about this a bit. I do want to note again, one change this time around was that we had the peer engagers out. There were three paid community members who helped us distribute flyers and door hangers and also had a lot of really great conversations in neighborhoods and parks and whatnot. Uh, but otherwise, a lot of these outreach methods were similar to those we used in the first phase of engagement in May and June. Uh, we had some sort of lessons learned related to that. Um, and so we, we built on sort of that first phase of engagement. Through November, we had a virtual meeting website up on our, or we had a virtual meeting page up on our project website. On that page, as you know, you could go there and view all the materials either on the website or by download. We also had four webinars throughout the month. We had online drop in meeting opportunities, an online survey, a toll free phone number. As you recall, we also had a work session with Planning Commission and Council on November tenth. And as Mr. Solah Yates mentioned earlier, we had a steering committee meeting on November twenty third for the Seville Plans Together Steering Committee. So it was a busy month. To give you a little insight, oops, into who we heard from in the month, uh, with all these different activities, we had really quite a range of engagement. Overall, um, just to be clear, we did have a little, we had less engagement than we did in May and June. This is for, I think, a lot of reasons. There's a lot of burnout happening with folks right now, virtually. Not only, I'm sure with some of you are feeling that, but community members are certainly feeling the strain. But also given that we were asking folks to review materials, review a draft Affordable Housing Plan, review comp plan materials, and then provide feedback. You know, it was a different type of survey, for example, than in May and June, when we were asking people for their visions for the future of the community. So very different phases of engagement here. So we had, uh, in the end, two hundred and seventy-four responses to the survey. We had about fifty-five email and website comments. And that includes, um, letters, longer letters, shorter emails and whatnot. We're still working through those. Uh, with the webinars, I think we had somewhere between twelve and sort of thirty people at each event. There were polls throughout each webinar, asking some questions, really high level about people's priorities. And then we had a Q and A session at the end of each of those events as well. Uh, I've mentioned the peer engagers will be including some information in our summary about, um, you know, what, what they ended up doing and the conversations they had. And then I'll note, we, we had the toll free phone line, which we had in the first phase of engagement as well. And we tried this time around to have virtual drop in sessions, where we're available by, you know, phone or Zoom. Folks could drop in and we did not have much participation in those events. And so it's, um, something we might try again and try differently, maybe different messaging around that or whatnot. But we wanted to try out something else, sort of trying to mimic the cafe conversations that we were hoping to have in person, which obviously we couldn't. I want to give, you know, just as I mentioned, we're working on summarizing everything we've heard. Our current, uh, current plan is to have a draft summary out by the end of the year.
Yeah, may I interrupt you?
Yes, of course.
And I, I think you've already done it. You've done it once, but it might be helpful just to build on the deck so you can remind us, you know, every time we talk, what the demographics look like, um, the ages, the ethnic backgrounds, the incomes, and whether they're rent earners, renters or owners.
Yeah, and we're, we're still, um, looking at the survey data since it did just close sort of mid late last week. But we will, um, definitely include that in the summary and I can, I can send something over to you once we have that as well.
And one of the, um, one of the things that we tried to make perfect was, um, just to represent the demographics, so. Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's certainly something that we, um, for example, with our peer engagers, um, you know, we worked with them to sort of target neighborhoods. We hadn't heard from as much in the first phase, for example. So, um, we're still trying to assess how successful that was. I will say, what I've seen so far, it looks like we, we've got pretty good spread in terms of demographics, um, percentage wise, even if not, uh, raw numbers, as you can see, they're lower. But I'll, I'll give you a summary of that once we have it.
Cool.
And on that point, I think last time we talked about survey results, we talked about potentially weighting the results or reweighting them. You know, to match Charlottesville's demographics. Um, so it'd be cool, if we even would just get like a quick slide on that next time of the last survey.
Uh, let me see here. I'm just making a note of that. So I think what we did, so on that realm, and I'm happy to, to work with, I'd like to work with you, maybe to make sure I'm, I'm understanding correctly, um, what, what you're thinking. But, um, for example, what we did with that first phase was, um, uh, in the Affordable Housing Plan, for example, they sort of cited where some themes came out. For example, for, um, people who identify as black or African American, um, homeownership was a bigger issue than it was for, um, folks who identify as white or Caucasian or, um, Asian American, for example. So, um, you know, we tried to pull out sort of qualitatively some of that information, but I see, I understand what you're saying, sort of weighting demographics to match Charlottesville's results. Sort of more of a quantitative way of doing that. Um, so we can work on doing that. I would say with, given we got fewer, um, survey respondents this time, you know, it is harder to make any, maybe more difficult to do that, but we can look at, um, the demographics and see how that might work out. Any other questions about the engagement process? I do have a slide on some initial sort of input we got, but. Okay, I'll move on. So we're working on a summary, but I want to pull out just a few items that we've heard at some of the meetings, um, the webinars, you know, steering committee, and some other discussions. And these are very draft things. We are still very much looking into what we heard. So, um, we just wanted to pull out some of these. So for example, when we look at the survey data, that sort of quantitative, data, asking people to sort of rate how well the priorities and, um, goals that we put forth matched with their vision for the future of Charlottesville. There was overall general agreement with the direction of both the Affordable Housing Plan and the Comprehensive Plan revisions. And that's not to say that everyone agreed with everything and we're just going to move forward with it. There are, um, open ended comments in there that we're still working through to see, you know, how people might be requesting that we think about tweaking the plan. We heard a need to clarify terminology. We had a lot of conversations about that on the webinars, for example. I pulled out soft density here. It's only one example, but, um, you know, sense of place, uh, for example, things like that. We're gonna, we want to make sure this plan is accessible to everyone. And so we're gonna just keep on tweaking some of that as we move forward. There were, there are a few on here about the Affordable Housing Plan. You know, we heard there, uh, people would like to see more explicit support for homeownership. And we've got, um, some recommendations toward homeownership in the plan. We're working on making those stronger and more clear. Uh, there were questions and concerns about the funding recommendations in the plan and we're working on, um, addressing those moving forward. Uh, and then, of course, there were also concerns about potential impacts of recommendations on existing residents, you know, particularly those who may be at risk of displacement. And so the plan did some thinking about that, but we want to make sure it's clear what we're proposing as we move forward. Because, um, we certainly don't want those, that to happen. We don't want to make those issues worse with the plan. As I said, this is really rough. This is a rough summary. This, I would say, these are just some initial themes that came out to me. Any questions about this? If you were on any of the calls, any other things that you would want to pull out?
I, I guess just procedurally, what would, what would a more explicit support for homeownership look like? Because that, that is in the plan.
Yes, I think just, um, making it more clear where it is in the plan, maybe making it more prominent, for example. We, because we, you know, it's a long plan. It's a, it's a long plan. And we want to make sure that, especially when we hear priorities from, um, that sort of come up in, from many people in many places. We want to make sure that, uh, people know where they can find that in the plan. So, um, that's what we're working on.
Um, and so, uh, you know, one thing I don't see in these kind of abbreviated thoughts, um, is really any, uh, consideration about whether it targets, uh, you know, the right AMI levels, which to me is probably the most fundamental question, question in prioritization. I mean, is that because, uh, you know, people broadly support targeting the lowest AMI levels and the plan already does that? So they don't have the, don't prefer change or, because I mean, to me, it seems like, then from what you told us last time, that that is intention, it's intention with the idea of focusing on homeownership. Um, in that if you focus on homeownership, you're addressing higher AMI levels typically, unless you're spending a lot more money.
Right. Uh, so in terms of what we've heard regarding the AMI levels in, in the draft Affordable Housing Plan, I don't have off the top of my head thoughts. I don't think we've heard really, um, uh, some consensus on that, you know, like a lot of these themes listed here came out a lot in our conversations. But again, we still need to go through the survey responses and a lot of the email comments. And so it could very well come out within that.
Thanks.
But that's something that we'll keep an eye out for as we go through. All right, uh, I'll move on, but happy to answer other questions on that. So next steps, and this looks like we're getting toward the end of the presentation, but we, I'm sure we still have a bit to talk about. So, uh, as I mentioned, we're working through December to compile the commute, the input or receive, not only from the general community engagement, but we also want to pull out what we heard from the steering committee, some of the themes that came out of the joint session and whatnot. We'll be moving forward. Uh, once we've got those, that summary completed, we'll be looking at revisions to the materials that we put out previously. The comp plan, initial revisions and the draft Affordable Housing Plan. And then with the comprehensive plan, we're going to start moving forward toward revising the goals and strategies within those topic specific chapters, which I know a lot of you worked on and those draft plans, um, from twenty eighteen pretty closely. So we're going to be looking at how might we propose revising those to match these revised vision statements, for example. Um, and we're also looking at revisions to the future land use map, which we'll talk about more in just a second. Um, I want to note with the Affordable Housing Plan, uh, one thing we talked about with you in February, we met in person, was that it might help to have a check in point to help us, um, have some agreement on some of these larger concepts before we move forward with the rest of the comprehensive plan. And so what naturally seems like a good point for that is with the draft Affordable Housing Plan, um, or with, with the draft, with the revised Affordable Housing Plan. Our plan right now is to meet with council. We're revising the plan now. We'll have a revision in the coming, um, month or so. And the plan right now is to have a conversation with council, uh, in January. And then hopefully work toward some sort of endorsement by council of the plan. And the reason for that is because we want, uh, we're hoping to have endorsement of some of the direction in terms, especially in terms of land use and zoning, uh, so that when we are looking into the comprehensive plan, um, we're moving toward land, the future land use map. And then to zoning, we, we want to make sure we've had those conversations.
Yeah, just, um, again, protocol question. Is your assumption that when you ask council if they agree with where you're going, you've already gotten our buy in?
Missy, do you want to respond to that about how that will work?
We had actually talked through that. Um, at this level, the endorsement would not be an approval process necessarily, but more of a nod that it's moving in the right direction so that the next phase of the project can continue forward with, uh, a little, a bit of confidence that the, you know, the stair steps that they're working through here will move forward from there. So, um, you know, you all will be providing comment throughout this, but, um,
I just don't want to get in front of council with something that you guys haven't gotten our consensus on as well, because that could cause a lot of rework and slow things down. Just be careful. Yeah, I thought out there, just to ask you to be careful about that. Make sure you bring my colleagues and me along with you when you do it. I still want us to, to take any steps backwards, because I want to get this done.
Understood. Well, Missy, we can talk about the best way to do that as we move forward and we'll, we'll check back in on that. But I, I think that makes a lot of sense. What I've got up on the screen now is the current schedule. And during the last, during November, when we were meeting with the community, we, we noted that we're meeting with you in early December and we wanted to do a check in on this, um, noting that it's an ambitious schedule. And it might be more realistic to, um, consider whether we need to adjust this a bit. But right now, the plan is to have a draft comprehensive plan, excuse me, in February, and that would include, uh, some revisions to goals and strategies and the future land use map. And then, uh, having a community engagement around that at that point. And then obviously with many steps in between, um, bringing that to, um, a hearing in, uh, let's say, spring. And we've got it marked on here and in April. My instinct is that, that time between, um, February and April may end up being slightly longer than it's shown here, allowing for more conversations. But, um, I want to, um, hear some of your thoughts around, around that. Uh, and what, sorry, before I, before I opened up, the reason for this sort of, um, tight schedule is that we are working from draft chapters. We're not starting from zero here. And so the thought is, we don't want to go back. We want to just move forward from where you all left off, or you and, um, previous planning commissioners. And so that's, that's why we're starting with this tighter schedule, but I'd like to hear your thoughts.
I'm sorry, um, candidly, I was I am, uh, Missy, so it wasn't, could you repeat the question?
Sure. Um, so, you know, just recognizing that this is an, sort of, I wouldn't say accelerated, but it's, um, it's a ambitious schedule. And so the reason for that is that we are not starting from zero on the chapters. We have the draft text of the chapters from twenty eighteen. And so the goal here, and especially as we move toward February, is that we're looking at the chapters. We're, um, bringing in revised versions of the guiding principles and the vision statements that we put out in November. Um, and then we're working on revisions to the goals and strategies that are already in those chapters, uh, potentially adding some, revising some. And then working from the draft land use map, which again is our, um, next and final item to discuss. So my question here is, does this right now seem feasible to, to you all in terms of the timeframes?
I'll speak for me, but I hope my, my colleagues will, will try me as well. I think. I'll speak for me, but I hope my, my colleagues will, will chime in as well. I think this is imminently reasonable. Because I'm hoping that you will be, you're building upon all the work that we've done for the last five years, getting, getting to this point. So I. If you, you know, going back redoing and rewriting stuff that doesn't need to be redone and rewritten, but. I don't know what, what are the old heads like, Jody, you've been around for a long time. You've worked on this forever. You got any thoughts on this?
Did you say old men?
Old heads, but yeah. You and I are old men, yes, we are.
Okay, no, I am, not you. So how, how critical is it that the Affordable Housing Plan? Be finished before you can proceed with the comprehensive plan?
We can certainly work on a lot of pieces of the comprehensive plan without having a final Affordable Housing Plan. But the housing chapter, the land use chapter, I mean, those will need to be influenced by that Affordable Housing Plan piece. And so if there is disagreement on the direction with that, that would certainly influence the schedule for those chapters in particular.
Well, I think you've heard, just sitting in this meeting tonight with us, how. How important the Affordable Housing issue is in the city and if. You are going to get planning commissions buy-in. For something that is taken to council. Then I think the January. Target for the Affordable Housing Plan is to begin with suspect, which then piggybacks. You know, which then delays the things, the other things that it is feeding into. Just my, just my gut reaction.
Rory, you were tempted to jump in. What, you have some thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question is pretty close to Jody's, which is like, you know, on the schedule. The comp plan, or sorry, the Affordable Housing Plan just kind of gets folded into the comp plan. So. Is the idea that you get this kind of informal nod from council, but that actual plan approval happens when the comp plan is approved, like?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so and that's, that would be happening in April, May.
Yes. And so the thought with this sort of calling an endorsement. Previous to that point is just so we're hoping we don't get to April and have a lot of those. Hard conversations that need to be had about some of those really difficult topics. We're hoping we can have those earlier. And that's why we, we've had things like the work session and some of these other previous meetings. But to Jody's point. We certainly don't think we're done talking about the Affordable Housing Plan, though we have had quite a few discussions, so. You know, we've been working to address concerns we've heard. And so we're hoping that a lot of those have been brought up already, but if we get to January and we're checking in with you all, which again, we're going to figure out the best way to do that. You know, that's something we can. That you're right, will, will impact the schedule if, if need be, which is, which is fine.
Cool. Yeah, I mean, I'll say, you know, this comp plan started in just a few weeks. From now, it'll be four years ago. I was 25 years old and didn't think about zoning at all. And. I will say I'd really appreciate if it's finished before I hit 30. Don't slip more than a quarter. And I like, I think, you know, one thing we should maybe be talking about, if there's, you know, work on part of the commission. Is having an actual work session for it, you know, in the off week, like we occasionally talk about. I know communication staff is constrained, but you know, I can think of some meetings that happened that are less important than that would be. So I'd rather do that than slip anymore.
Yeah, Lyle, you look like you're jumping in, about to jump in.
Yeah, that, that's my concern too. We're, we're talking about hard stuff. It was hard in 2018. It's hard now. The, if we can come to agreement on, on like the map, then yeah, we're, we're going to make our times. If we can't, then it's all ruined.
Yeah, and I guess our, sorry.
Let's see, I want to make sure Liz and Gary got a chance to chime in if they wanted to.
No.
You with us?
I mean, I, I look forward to seeing the, the summary and then that will kind of help me age. You know, where we are.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm sorry, Jenny, sorry. This is your meeting, so please, I'll, I'll back up.
No, no, this is a discussion. This is your plan, so. Okay, I think this is useful. I think we can certainly. Figure, so I guess Rory, when you mentioned a work session, are you talking, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Are you talking about the Affordable Housing Plan? Piece or the land use piece or something with the?
I'm just saying that it's, it should be a tool, the toolbox for anything you guys feel needs more work and would have to be deferred to the next, you know, full session.
Got it.
And therefore slip.
Well, we'll. Keep checking with you on this. I think the next check-in point on. That, as Liz was saying, that will help us figure out where we are at. We'll be having that summary of what we heard, so. You'll be one of the first to get that, all of you. Excuse me. So as our final item, we want to start thinking about the land use map. There's a few things I. Want to say before we dive into this, so. First of all, for the benefit of those who may be on the line but aren't as familiar with the future land use map, the comprehensive plan land use chapter. Contains the future land use map, which incorporates some of the land use sort of goals that are in the plan, but also is a long-term. Strategy for land use in the city. It often is sort of the basis for some zoning. Adjustments, but the future land use map is also often a much longer term vision for land use than zoning, current zoning would be. So the map we're showing here is, I believe, the latest, the last version that you, the planning commission discussed with. The public, I believe in March 2018. Missy, please correct me if that's wrong. And we know there were several working versions of this map developed after this point. But the reason we're starting with this is because it was, as, as we recall, the last version shared at a public meeting, so.
Right. So I don't know if we want to go over this now, but this map is from 2017. But did kind of stay in effect because we never, or they never talked about the future landing map again until November of 2018. But then a new map was produced and that was presented to council in December of 2018, and that map would be the latest produced in public.
Okay.
There's actually two maps between the November work session and the council one, and the colors sort of changed in the middle, but they're based on the same work session.
I've spent too much time researching this.
Why wouldn't we use this as a stake in the ground and work on this map? And then use this map to move forward to, to get to the end game. Is there any, any reason that to do that? Okay, looks like there is. Okay, Jenny, please.
Reason is that I thought that we were building on top of the work that was done in 2018. Whereas this seems to be kind of reverting all of that.
Well, you know, there was a, there are many discussions that happened along the way, but they, they didn't gain consensus. So there's a lot of information that you all have had discussions on, and we provided that information to the consultants, but. We've got to start with, with something concrete and, and that was not, you know. We were kind of all over the place, guys. We have a lot of good background information and, you know, if we, if we can start from. A spot, hopefully, potentially this one, and then gather the comments that you all still feel are relevant from those other discussions.
And this is, this is the last place where we did, did have real true consensus. We all, we all knew this is the starting point. That's what we're trying to build on. Every time we tried to build beyond this, we, we had five different opinions. And just for the consulting, consultants, this is where, again, the, the perfect really got in the way of the good. So keep that in mind if you're walking us through this. It doesn't have, this will be a living, breathing document, iterative document, so it doesn't have to be perfect. You don't have to get, get everybody's head nodding. Just get us to a point where we can get them. Enough folks nodding in the right direction and then we can iterate it as it goes on. Sorry, I have to repeat that over and over again, but.
I think we may have lost. Mr. Rice, is that correct?
I don't, Mr. Rice is very important to us, but oh, you need, you need him to share.
Yes, I, I believe I can share my screen if.
Good.
Oh, wait, someone else, someone else.
Pretty sure yours, but I had it up, so.
That's great, if you don't mind.
Unless you want to change slides, but just let me.
I'll just let you know, we're, we're pretty close to the end of the slides anyway. But. Okay, so I'm hearing what everyone is saying and I'd like to talk more about that, but. Before we get into discussion, I just wanted to mention a few more things. So we. We met with you as I, as I mentioned earlier in February, most if not, I think all of you were there. And you did bring some things up to us at that point that you had thought about in previous processes. And just an abbreviated list of that, you know, you mentioned you'd done some thinking about how to tie transportation into land use. You mentioned wanting to move away from dictating exact densities and heights by parcel in this future land use map. We talked about nodes and sort of nodes of community services. And wanting to consider ways to make, make them at more place-based and less focused on linear corridors. And we talked about the need to consider topography and sort of land suitability in all of this. And so that's a really abbreviated version of what we talked about. But we went back and we, we've looked at that, where, you know, we've, you know, we know you've already given us a lot of your thoughts on that, so we are including that in our discussion here, but. We added some questions on the slide and we're not trying to answer all of these tonight, and we don't even need to talk through them individually, but we want to. Know in general what you would like us to keep in mind as we begin this process of updating the land use map. And so I'd suggest that for this meeting, it might be best to keep input to the larger scale, sort of big. Big picture things that you want us to keep in mind. Recognizing that we will need to have really specific discussions about neighborhoods and places. But at this point, you know, I'm suggesting maybe those larger scale comments might be best.
I'm gonna, forgive me, I'm, I'm gonna jump ahead and ask Jody. Jody, can you kind of lead us to the, at least initiate the conversation? You've got more, more background in this stuff than we do. Any, any guidance from you?
I, I, the guy, the guidance you can get from me is that what Jenny is, is. Starting on for us will, will be another couple of hours going through. This is a, an involved conversation that I don't think you can handle just generally. And. And, and frankly, being the old guy, I'm having a hard time remembering what I did three years ago. So I, I need a little time to, to digest this. Sorry, sorry to take the coward's way out, but I'm, I'm, I need a little time to, to go back through my notes and, and where we were and. And, and, and come back to this point. It's going to take a while to go from. Affordable housing comp plan to wow, the land use map. Man, this brings back memories.
Hey, Gary.
Yeah, so I have a comment about the whole land use map process as well, and mostly kind of what Jody was alluding to. It is a huge issue that shapes the questions that will come after this. And so the one thing I would put in there is the University of Virginia. Where the city ends and the University of Virginia begins. Our land use map should reflect. How we envision. The future. Of the city and as it, as it pertains to the effect of the university on the city. And so, and I'm going to throw in this, this is always my record. I've, I've, I've been a planning commissioner in other places and I have friends who, Ohio State University. Blacksburg, Virginia Tech, these are places that also have been heavily affected by the university. And as if the city could somehow get out in front. There would be ways that could address affordable housing there. That would allow those, the university to kind of participate in addressing those issues. So that's the, that's. And I don't have the answers to, as to the language that we use, but when you look at the map. I believe that the University of Virginia has a vested interest in affordable housing. Just for the functioning of, you know, the people who work there. So I would love to see some designation of color around where the university is. What do you call, is someone call it commerce corridors or? Anyway, I, I don't, I'm there, I know there are ways to talk about these sensitive areas. That right now, the land use map we're looking at isn't really guiding us anywhere. As it pertains to this city's relationship to the University of Virginia. So look at some other places that have the same kind of relationship and what they've done. With their land use and their. Their planning that allows the university to help us go in the direction we want to go. That's all, that's a big, big idea thing, but it's, it's the elephant in the room a lot of times.
Really useful, thank you.
Good big idea. Wow, you got any big ideas?
Well, I was, I was around in 2017, so I remember, well, I wrote, I remember what I wrote down. So, yeah, when we put out this map in 2017, people freaked out. There was concern that it's a down zoning, we're actually getting rid of affordable housing during an affordable housing crisis. Scary, crazy, bye. And also, this is. Reflecting and re-encoding century-old race lines that are shameful and painful and should not be in our code.
Any other big ideas? From the, the new kid in the back, Ms. Russell, any big ideas?
Well, I certainly don't benefit from the knowledge that other commissioners have, so. Whatever can be shared to help bring me up to speed and. It's not going to be just comparing map for map because, you know, I can see the draft that is apparently a revision to this iteration. And there's a heck of a lot more colors and they're a lot brighter, but you know. Of course, I'd want to know the, the conversation that went into that. So. But yeah, this, the, the first question, if this went out as a current draft today, what would the general reaction be? It'd be, there's a lot of light yellow and that's something we know. Is a problem in our, in our current, current land juice map. You know, so I just, I, I look forward to more information and being part of the process.
And so Rory, because you are such the policy walk a detail guy, I know. Big, big general ideas is going to be hard for you, but can you keep it at 40,000 feet?
Yeah, no, I mean, the biggest thing, I think the biggest thing I said when we drew, started drawing this map is what Gary said. Is that we know UVA is big and growing at a, you know, a set rate. And if you don't build enough beds for those kids to sleep in, they're just going to kind of spread out into the rest of the housing units in our city. And there's like, you know, Echo would click said in their letter, there's no reason to not just jam as many of them into as small of a space over there as we possibly can. The other, you know, high-level thing I'd note on this map. Is, you know, thinking about. You know, where the purple areas are. Is not where, if you said to any random person on the street, like, where, you know, do you think, you know, you'd like to live or the tall buildings should be? Or like the, you know, densest part of the city should be, you know, they would not say, you know, in Food Lion. Or, you know, where Burger King is in Barrett's Road, they would say, put it near UVA in downtown. And so, I mean, even before you start thinking about what the colors mean, not that I have anything against using or. using or, you know, putting higher density and intensity into either underutilized shopping centers or underutilized industrial areas. I think that's great, but if you put all of the perspective intensity there, it's just not going to happen. Like, we know who owns Barracks Road and we know that they have absolutely zero intention of ever like putting housing units or like big buildings on it. Because they run shopping suburban strip malls, shopping centers for a living. That is what that Realty Trust does. You know, I think if people like saw this, they'd be like, what is this purple dot? I don't even know what that is. Oh, and it turns out it's like all on a floodplain and it's a totally underutilized scrapyard. And that's just sort of hopeful. So I would hope that we go beyond hopes of, you know, maybe this place can be used better in the future, though we should totally still include those two. And start saying, well, hey, like, these two places are the jobs and amenities center, centers of the whole city. And, you know, people, especially people who are willing to live in apartments and want to be near stuff. They want to be near those things and not, you know, way out there necessarily. And then once you think about the fact that this is the amenity center of the city, you know, you really start to wonder, well, why is this purple blob biased towards the south side rather than the north side? Which actually in terms of like current built form is probably, you know, denser. There are a lot of very high lot coverage buildings up here. They're mostly pretty old. There are several stories. You know, it's pretty intense, whereas, you know, here you have like an old wool mill that's like 90% parking and it's just a vast expanse of asphalt. So probably go back and listen to Lyle's comment. If you want to actually answer that question, I'll just pose it hypothetically. You know, here it's an industrial area. I think some amount of industrial uses or land being re devoted towards more productive uses is nice. At the same time, like there's good reason to have industrial land in the first place and there are job centers and important. You know, and, and the difference between industry and, you know, eight story residential building doesn't really exist on this map. Because they're both purple because it just means high intensity. And so, yeah, I mean, to echo what Commissioner Russell said, it was very frustrating to me in looking back on this stuff. That there was no, there's no minutes from that November 2017 meeting. As far as I know, there's no recording, at least not publicly. Like literally, this is the product of that meeting. Is that we all just kind of drew, you know, on a piece of paper where it's really hard to see what was underneath. And came out with this and then staff kind of turned this into, you know, a different map, right? And, you know, I think this map probably has some problems. Wow, what is going on with this map? Yeah, I think this was the first map produced and then it became this one. I don't know why the colors changed, which really gets the big question of like a map without colors or, or, or sorry, a, a map without a legend or a graph without units is really just a bunch of lines or colors on a page, right? So, you know, ultimately, this doesn't really mean very much at all. But, you know, I do know for a fact that like this land use narrative was adopted by unanimous consent of the commission. And this is supposed to be what the colors mean, except that we readapted this idea of like hatches for mixed use areas because you know, as the Belmont people will attest, there's probably good reason to put additional restrictions on, you know, some commercial uses versus residential still, even as we generally want to get into just regulating intensity and filter form. So I mean, you know, if we're keeping this narrative, which I think we should, because it's a great start, then this map looks a fair amount better than it did, you know, in the real early stages when yellow meant, you know, large lot, single family detached homes. And, yeah, I mean, that's pretty much my thoughts. The other thing I'll say, and I always say, is please look at actual built forms in, in examining what the city or a neighborhood or a part of the city looks like. Like places on the current zoning map or the current comp plan map. You know, if you, if you look at those maps, you would think that these places are very, very different from what they are in reality. So, yeah, that's all I got.
So Jenny, we are fortunate enough to have UVA as a presence on our board. So I'd love to hear if UVA's got any thoughts, especially about Gary's thinking. So Bill?
Yeah, I mean, that was a pretty high level comment he had about, you know, UVAs. You know, how we affect the built environment around us. That said, and one of my thoughts initially was maybe, maybe there's a way of getting more of like UVA on this map in terms of, because, you know, it's, it's always weird because our, the way the city county line kind of bisects our, our grounds makes it a little weird. Like you'll have areas on here that are part of the health system that are in the city and then the bulk of grounds is, is not. So maybe it'd be good to somehow get the, the density or the land use, whatever we're calling this. It's kind of a little bit of both really for UVA into this. So it might give those areas to the west of town a little more con, context. Also, yeah, kind of maybe re, reexamine these areas around, you know, if this is deemed a really important, you know, aspect of the plan and UVA's role in all this. Maybe really, before we go too far forward with this map, you know, really look at those areas around UVA to make sure they're depicted correctly now. I mean, I know that there was quite an upzoning a good while back at this point of the neighborhoods around UVA to kind of try to absorb more kind of student housing type development. You know, is it orange? Is it mauve? It feels like maybe it's a little more intense than what's being shown here. Likewise, the health system is shown in orange and it's like super dense. It's probably one of the, the most intensely used areas of land in the city. So, you know, I think with, with that, it might give things a little more context and help, help this discussion forward a little bit. As we.
Jenny, I, I think there may be great value in, maybe someone from your group just, you know, spending 30, 40 minutes with Bill talking about, you know, their, I'm on the, Bill invited me to the master, UVA Master Planning Council, so I get updates on the things that they're thinking about. And they've got, there's a whole lot of stuff going on right in this area right here that, that's, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road that would be of value for your, your team to be aware of it. A chat with Bill would be of value, I think.
Yeah, if you, if you're not aware of it already, definitely around the, like the Ivy Corridor development, which you mentioned earlier, Brandon Avenue has been kind of intensifying since we've kind of built some student housing and student health down there. So, yeah, I mean, love to talk. I, I, I know that Alice is on the committee for the comp plan. One of the working groups, Alice Rousher, the, the architect for UVA. So, you know, she may be dialed into this a little bit more than, than I am, depending on what that group has discussed so far.
Yeah, she's on our steering.
Yeah. So as you, as you start to develop this map a little more, I don't know if that's the next step. I mean, I'm sure she'll have a lot, lot to say as well. So if you're not, if you don't end up getting it from her and you want to talk to me, that's, that's totally fine.
Okay.
Yeah, Jenny, I, that, the, the more I hear people talk, maybe there's an additional color to be added. And I'm not sure if, if other, other university towns may have already done this type of stuff. And, and at the intersection, there could be a, a whole nother color that pertains directly to the city's interface with the, with the university. With, you know, provisions that help move in a direction that only happened in a place like that. I, I, that's what I mean is, you know, it's not reinvent the wheel. There's probably another city or another town that has something like that.
Phil and Hosea, is this?
Yeah, thanks for putting this up.
Is, so I know PAC is dead, but is the Area B, Area A map still in effect?
Yeah, absolutely.
As part of Loopsec?
No, no, it's not. The three party agreement still stands.
And it's not this, this map, the, the, the map that was originally put with the area plan back in the eighties, because this map has not been adopted in the same manner that that one was.
Ah, okay. So only the original eighties plan is in effect?
Correct.
All right, I'll see.
That gets really confusing because the map you just brought up Rory is, is typically the one that we use. Discussion there.
Where would you like to go next, Jenny?
Hosea, can I say something very briefly? But listening to this conversation and everyone talking, my conclusion is that for Jenny, the map that you have up here now is the product of a different planning commission. We were head, this is about two years after that planning commission started the process. About this time, the planning commission changed radically though, by the, the, the number of members and by the, the kind of the sensibilities of those new members. And I think, I'm not sure what value this map currently has right now with this planning commission. So I, I, I give that for what it's worth.
I like it as a punching bag.
Yeah, I mean, I do agree, you do have to start somewhere. And it maybe has some value in that, in that, just like we approached it at the 1117 meeting. You know, it's, one thing, one thing nice I'll say about this map is that it's easy to create a better map by just being additive. And just taking a marker because there's no erasers for markers. So, you know, that makes it trickier if you're drawing on a physical piece of paper, which you're not anymore. To, you know, start with a map that's fairly intense and scale it back. Which I think the map that came out of it in really one area in particular, I think, you know, Birdwood should have been scaled back, but, you know, this one, I think for the most part, if you just color more stuff in, you're going to be in pretty good shape.
I think it would be an interesting exercise for the consultants to apply the, regardless almost of the existing status of the map, but to apply some of the principles outlined in the affordable housing plan and see how they would then overlay with, with a map. Because right away, that's going to reveal some potentially problematic conflicts within the language of the affordable housing plan, like where, you know, on the one hand, we say we don't necessarily want to focus density and, and change in historically African American neighborhoods or, or things that might displace residents. And then you sort of look at the map and go, whoa, wait a second, that's, you know, not colored that way. So it will just be interesting to see like how those, those things all move forward, you know, holistically, I guess.
I think, to me, that seems like a good way to think about it. And I think it would be sort of a rough, a rough sort of sketch of what that would look like. That, in terms of what is in the draft of affordable housing plan, I think that would be a good place to start, Ms. Russell. So for, on our end, in order to start our process of seeing what we might need to tweak on this. And I hear what you're saying, Jody. This might not be the best place to start from, but yeah, I think we can take what we've heard tonight into consideration and what we talked about in February and think about what we, what we might think would come out of this map that would be useful based on what we heard from you and based on what we have in these documents we've been developing and then what we think needs to change. And so we won't be shy about that. Well, we, you know, moving forward, you have us on the team for a reason. You know, we, we don't want to lose work that you've done, but hearing all these comments tonight, I think it sounds like we there's not, you're not wedded to this map, to put it lightly. So, okay, that's all really good to know. This is the, you know, this is not, this is an interim discussion. This is one of many discussions. And so I know we all need to get our head back into this as well. You all, you know, want to, I'm sure as well. So if you have additional thoughts that come up on these questions, on other things, things you're remembering, notes you took at previous meetings, please feel free to send that to us. We're information sponges and it'll help us in our process.
Can I just make another comment, Jenny, about your, your firm and the work that you're doing? You know, I, I know in, in our denominational work, there is a lot of rethinking and replanning about what is going to never be the same again after COVID, okay? And in terms of the timing of a new map coming out, the, the term I've heard several times is never waste a good crisis. If there's ever a time for the next map to come out to look vastly different than the last one, it will be coming out of this crisis. So whatever tools or other places you have, I'm, I'm so open to seeing something completely innovative.
Yeah, I mean, let's remember there was a previous crisis that led to this map getting rejected as well.
What was that? Oh, led it, led to getting it rejected, right?
Yeah, I mean, one more thing I'd add. Separate from that last point, but, but not really talking about anything specific in mapping in general. But like to that one principle you mentioned about not like drawing colors on a per parcel basis and instead just kind of drawing colors generally and then letting them bleed. It sounds like a really cool concept, but it leads to some ambiguity where like the actual way in which like the, the amount you let it bleed starts to really matter, right? And like whether it gets cut off, you know, in major topographical or other physical, you know, you know, in like barriers, right? Like this is across a railroad. It probably shouldn't be bleeding over there. You know, should it bleed, you know, this many pixels from this color to that color? Like that was all kind of really out of scope of our original conversation. And you can see this one really didn't bleed at all. I think this is, this is the first map that came out of that meeting. And so like those sort of technical decisions that seem like not really something you think about. And I think in this case, we're really just done by whoever put these maps together. Kind of sort of matter if we're going to stick to that particular principle. Because, you know, eventually some guy right at the corner is going to say, well, like my parcel is in this thing, even though you didn't specifically color my parcel or choose to, but you did color it. So therefore it's this color, therefore I want this or that. So, so I'm going to think about, I don't know how you.
And, and we, we had those discussions back in the day. We had how the map was pixelated was done in a mathematical way for how it was. So, so there is some background as to, as to how that was done. As staff, we had talked through different ways we would potentially handle requests for parcels that were on borders. And, and we, we didn't, we hadn't gotten to a point where we had had a mock project. That was actually one of our next steps before our process shut down. But we figured that we would have multiple analyses if it was near an area where there were multiple areas, because, you know, it could go kind of either way. So, so there was some thought into, into how that could be analyzed at that point in time.
Cool.
Okay. Well, I know it's getting late. You all have been on here for a while. I think we've gotten a lot of good input from you tonight. And as I said, don't be shy about following up with additional information, thoughts that you have. This was the end of our slides, our last item on the agenda. The final slide is contact info. This was the end of our slides, is our last item on the agenda. The final slide is contact information. But I think you all know how to get ahold of us for those participants who are on the line, who, there you go, thank you. Who might not know, you know, can reach us on the website, our email address, social media. And we've still got the toll-free phone number up as well, so.
We really, really want to get this done. So, and again, you'll hear me say this over and over again. Do not let the perfect become the enemy of the good. Let's get a good document out there and then we'll perfect it over the years.
Understood.
So, Tanya's not here. So anyone else want to do it? Anyone else want to make a motion?
I moved to adjourn until the first Tuesday in January of 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Miss Kristoff, just kidding. We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Hey, everyone.
Good night. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Let's catch a beer one day next week.
The bar, the bars won't be open.
Next week?
Yeah, the government, anyway, I'm not going to, I'm not predicting, but.
We're outside, we're outside.
Okay, outside. Are you, come up to Rory. Hey, Rory and I have rooftop apartments, so.
We're going to champion Rory.
That sounds good to me.
All right, take care.
Yeah, and those rooftop apartments go for about the same as is affordable for what the units are going earlier. So, I mean, the idea that in 10 years, a mile away from here, they'd be that much more expensive than my apartment, which is pretty sweet, as Gary can attest, it's shocking to me.
Guys.
Hey Rory.
Hi, everyone.
Rory, you know, I, I got a lit Christmas tree on my roof. You're going to put something on?